We'd like to ask you if you'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You have to put him on the spot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Nicely done.
Brownies, I think. I think they're brownies. No, no, I know.
Is evening's agenda?
Maybe not, maybe the hot girls got it.
Public service announcements, request from Brownie Troop 64510 for a little free pantry in front of the senior center. Regional dispatch presentation, department head presentations, police chief Thomas Ford, fire chief John Grasso, and building and zoning commissioner Nelson Burlingame. TIF policy review, town administrators update, correspondence, approval of minutes, old business, new business, citizens forum, and adjournment. For public service announcements, the annual Memorial Day ceremony and veterans breakfast will be held at Tantaskeway Regional Junior High School, 320 Brookfield Road, on Friday, May 26th. The town of Sturbridge has two vacancies also for the design review committee. Whoever's interested, please contact the town administrator. On the Sturbridge Trail Committee is going to have a National Trails Day event on Lead Mine Mountain property on Saturday, June 3rd, at 8:00 a.m. And they would like someone from the Board of Selectmen to come to the ribbon cutting ceremony. And if anyone is interested from the Board, I would also ask contact either Chairman Blanchard or the town administrator. Monday, May 15th, by presidential proclamation, is National Peace Officers' Day. And this coming week is the annual Police Officer Memorial Week in Washington, DC. Are there any other service announcements? Michael?
No.
Maybe?
No.
Mr. Gomo, any other service announcements?
Every day is a wonderful day.
Okay. So, we have a request from Brownie Troop 64510 for a proposal to build a little free pantry in front of the senior center. Please come up.
Do you want to have him up?
Come on up. Some of you can have a seat in the seats. You get to use the microphone.
Okay, so as you start, you can tell us your name and then what you'd like to say. Just talk, yeah, just talk. But talk, honey, talk into this because it goes on TV. That's not for us in here, that's for the TV, so somebody watching you at home will be able to hear you.
Oh. I'm Avery Adams. Hello, we are from Sturbridge Brownie Troop 64510. And we would like permission to build our little free pantry outside the Sturbridge Senior Center.
I'm Casey. The little free pantry is a good idea to help people who don't have enough food or enough money to buy food.
My name is Anna Burns. And we are using the money we raised from selling Girl Scout cookies to build and stock the little free pantry.
I'm Ella Reed. We want to do this to help our seniors. Helping people is part of being a Girl Scout, and it feels good to help.
Hi, my name is Sophia. We've asked me people for permission.
Hi, my name is Kendall. We have asked the senior center and the board of health and the building inspector, and they all have said yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Who's next?
We'll be responsible for keeping the pantry fixed and stocked.
We don't want anyone to be hungry.
My name is Gretchen. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
That's better than most presentations we have heard.
It's right to the point. It doesn't go on and on and on and on. Thank you, actually, the thank you comes from us, that you even think about doing this. This is awesome. And that you actually got everything in order. You talked to the building inspector, you talked to the board of health, you talked to the senior center. That's what you do. And then you came up and you said, hey, all these people said yes, so now it's your turn. So that's a great way to make the presentation. Is there a motion on the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve Brownie Troop 64510 from Sturbridge, Mass. To build a food pantry, a little free pantry, in front of the senior center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say that this project is right in line with the Brownie law, the Girl Scout law that says what? Says you to be friendly, helpful, and what else?
Considering caring. What I say and do. Caring is strong. Scepter and help, I say and do. Respect myself and others. Respect authorities. Use resources wisely. Make the world a better place. And be a sister to every Girl Scout.
Yeah.
Nice.
Thank you.
Selectman Dowling? Selectman Dowling?
Okay, take it.
No, not at all. Selectman Dowling?
I just had a question for the residents that are watching. I think it's great you're going to be responsible for stocking it. One of you indicated that, yes. Now, if residents would like to also contribute, is there going to be some way that they can, you know, contribute canned goods? Or are you going to take from the community on certain days? Or have you thought about that?
Okay. So, the idea of a little free pantry is that anyone will have the opportunity to put something into the pantry, just as anyone can take something out if they choose to. There are going to be some rules as to what can and can't be in the pantry. So, things that will be, will not have a chance to mold. So, cardboard or plastic, but anything in a metal can or in a glass jar is fine. And then, we will not only stock it, but monitor what's in there to make sure when people put things in that it does adhere to those guidelines.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
You're going to put all of this on your blog?
I will. In fact, I would also welcome you, if you have, once you go live with this, once it's built, if there's going to be a document that's written that describes it, if you would email that to me, and I would post it on the public access cable channel, as well as through the town's website and administrator's blog.
Okay, we need, now we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? All carries four to nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, girls. That's a big undertaking. Can we shake your hands? You want to come up? Can we shake your hands?
Thank you very much. Very good luck.
Good luck. Nice job.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good job.
Good job. Thanks, Joe. Thank you very much, girl.
Oh, my gosh, they are so cute. They all got to say something.
Wait a couple minutes.
I know, exactly, Craig, you can't do that.
We are now being recorded by the newspaper, the telegram. Okay. We have a little equipment problem, so we unfortunately can't put what's on our screen on the overhead because of a faulty equipment at this moment. But the town administrator has turned the monitor so that it faces the audience and the folks at home. Now, is it?
But I don't know if it's going to broadcast like I thought it might, but I have the ability of posting the entire presentation on our town's website. And I'll make sure to take care of that in the next 24 hours.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, and so now we start with the regional dispatch presentation.
If I could do as good as 10% of what they did.
So, what we'll do is, I have the computer here in front of me. You folks will have a copy of the presentation on your screen. And you can see this quite well, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, so you just let me know when you want me to move, and I'll move.
Thanks very much for having me tonight.
Please introduce yourself for the folks at home.
I am Tom Kennedy. I am the CEO of a company in Westboro. And we're a nonprofit, the Center for Technology Commercialization, which is really a public safety technology center. It's a, and this past late summer, we were awarded a contract to do an assessment of the five communities who were interested in regionalizing their dispatch. So, what I'm going to do is present to you is what my findings were, as well as my recommendations. And that, and to give you as good of an update as we have since we finished that, as well as to answer any of your questions. I know several of you actually had an opportunity to go to a forum that they had in Oxford that all five communities were represented. So... The, our mission, as we undertook this project, which there was really three people that were working on it, myself. And I am a retired lieutenant colonel from the Mass state police. I had 30 years of experience, the last two years I was the deputy superintendent. The experience that I had, the development to this project is that we had an opportunity when the law passed in 1991 to establish three regional dispatch centers, particularly in western Massachusetts. The nearest one is in New Braintree. So, I was able to oversee that process. In my responsibilities at CTC, we had a, we were undertaking some 14 projects, most of them in central and western Massachusetts, conducting feasibility studies, as well as to, as well as to assist communities in implementing the recommendations. The nearest one is in Holden, where Holden, West Boylston, and Princeton have regionalized their dispatch. So, our, the mission of our project was really to determine if regionalization of the emergency communications for both, for Charlton, Oxford, Southbridge, Spencer, and Sturbridge is a practical, effective, and economic endeavor for all of the communities. The method that we used to go about this project was really to do interviews. We were able to speak with the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, as well as their support staff to gather their insight, which is really critical to the whole process. It's important for us to understand exactly where they see the opportunities, as well as the potential areas that need to be addressed if, in fact, you decide to move forward with this. We conducted onsite assessments at each of the public safety answering points, the dispatch centers. We analyzed all aspects of the current communications centers for operations, as well as their technology training and their procedures. We assessed the possible sites that a center could be actually located at. And we worked with a committee that was, the committee was made up of the town managers, administrators, the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, their support staff, representatives of the dispatch, dispatchers from the five communities. This was a very open and transparent process. Any, as we went through individual steps, we were able to present that at the monthly meetings, answer their questions, and as well as their concerns, as, for the decisions that were made in each one of the steps. So, the task that we were assigned to, we created an inventory of the existing communication systems. We compiled the call volume. We determined the needed equipment and information technology that's established in these centers. We prepared a draft operating and capital budget for the center. We identified a specific location that was, we identified as the best location for locating the center. We gave recommendations for operational improvements. And we participated in the discussions with the existing regional center in Webster, where there are two communities located. In the first meeting that we had with the chiefs and the town managers, we were able to identify a vision for what the chiefs felt were extremely important. One is to, the vision was to create a regional dispatch center district that was solely focused on emergency communication services as a separate government entity. It's be located in a standalone facility that provided for the ability to expand its capacity by 50%. The interviews that we conducted with the chiefs gave a great deal of insight, as I mentioned, about the strengths as they saw a, you know, the original approach to dispatch services as that they would be able to see a enhanced emergency medical dispatch capability, cost savings and greater efficiency, sharing of services and coordination with other towns, an opportunity for regional grants, new systems that do require technical skills for the people that are actually going to be working there. New innovations, they would provide for consistency of services for both police and fire services, as well as from community to community. There would be a workload distributed more evenly among the dispatchers. And also would provide a more robust system. They were looking for a more robust system that would be able to center on greater, larger incidents, where it does require multiple dispatches to be able to undertake the services that are required. They had some concerns. Some of the concerns were about, in a regional dispatch center, the potential of having information overload. They were also concerned about prisoner custody and care, dock stations. Some of the, some of the communities that would be, made that decision, as they have in other areas, where they actually, certain hours of the day and days of the week, there wouldn't be anybody in the station, with the exception of the offices that were starting their shifts, processing paperwork, or coming back in from their shifts. Also, a loss of a dispatcher at a window of the police station. And it would be less community. I say these, these are all issues that would need to be addressed as you move forward, if, in fact, you do decide to do that. They said that it would be, they gave recommendations that would be important for successful integration of all of the communities into the regional center. And they said that these are things that really have to occur, all of the towns to benefit equally. The regional center to be located at a neutral site. When I say that, it's not at a particular community's police station or fire station where they would be asked to do other responsibilities. They wanted an independent site. The chiefs would need administrative support to replace some of the services that the dispatchers had been providing. They want to provide for transparency. They do not want to lay off any of the current dispatches. And they want to, they want to be able to meet with the community dispatches as the project moves forward. Involve the dispatches in the transition process. Additional, additional recommendations that they made for successful integration was to ensure a transition process that occurs for the works that would be done by the dispatches for the offices. Currently, the dispatches in most communities do provide other services where they're actually doing administrative functions inside of the station. Greater technology integration, five communities going into, into a system that has a capability of being able to communicate with their radio systems, as well as their information technology. A plan for a robust center that could accomplish, that could accommodate major events and call surge. They wanted to be able to locate Fire District 7, their regional fire system that they're able to, that all of them participate in. As well as to plan for outreach to employees and to the public, to really, to demystify what a regional center does, which is really the outreach if, in fact, you end up going through it. The findings that we, that we did identify is that currently all of your dispatch centers are located, have one dispatcher per shift, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And that the most dispatch center equipment and radio systems are outdated and would need to be replaced within a five-year period. All five communities have effective leadership. Personally, for me, it was, it was great working with, with not only the administrators, but all of the police chiefs and the fire chiefs. You have highly effective leaders, and I will say that here in Sturbridge, as well as we found in the other communities. Leaders are the ones that are able to implement any kind of regionalization or consolidation. I believe it's really critical to have that kind of leadership, and that's what you have in your community. All five communities have established a common vision, the things that they, they really believe that needs to be in place to consider regionalization. A location was identified at the wooded school in north Oxford. It's a, it's a former, it's a former school that does provide the adequate space for the, for the location of the center. And it is feasible to regionalize the emergency communications and dispatch services for the five communities. Taking a step back is that in January 2015, there was a law that was passed that established a regional dispatch district. They have, much like you have regional schools, regional water districts, the law allowed for a, the creation of regional dispatch districts. In a very summarized way, there is a regional board of directors that is primarily, the people that sit on that board are your representatives. Generally, it's your town manager, town administrator. They hire, they fire, they approve budgets, all consistent with the communities. There's an operation committee that's made up of the police chiefs and the fire chiefs. And they have very specific duties, and primarily it's to oversee the day-to-day operation, to ensure that there's effective day-to-day operations. It's a regional municipal entity to meet all of the, the public safety needs for emergency communications for all of the centers. I do have a, in the presentation, I do have a picture of the site for the wooded school. In the report itself, there is a, an assessment we went through in identifying that location. There were some seven locations we looked at. And that we used a variety of factors to review each of the sites. The one that really met the needs was the wooded school. It has some 6,900 square feet of space on one floor and 3,100 square feet of space on the, on the lower floor that at one time had been the school's cafeteria. So, there was, and it does need upgrades as far as bringing it up to code, as well as making it a tight building. Up until five years ago, it had been used as a school, a nursery school. And the town of Oxford has identified the funding and for the, you know, for bringing it up to code, as well as to making it a tight building. And I'll talk a little bit about the State 911 as far as converting it into a 911 center. There was a, we did present the cost savings. And I presented the information, is how the costs are being distributed. My recommendation was to use the same factors that the State 911 provides for, for the distribution of funding. And like I said, I'll talk a little bit about the role the State 911 does play in this whole project. But, so that there's a, there's a chart there that does present the, each of the community's population, as well as the 911 call volume. And to see how it actually breaks down into a 50-50%, that's exactly how State 911 Department, and that's how many of the communities that I've worked with in the, in the past. For Sturbridge, with the five communities, it would be 16.16% of the total cost. There is, for the recurring costs for the, for the five center, and I have to say that there is, as of right now, there has been, Spencer has dropped out of the process for the time being. Oxford has, has approved moving forward with this. The other communities have not taken any votes on, on the, on the creation of the center. So, the cost savings you have in front of you is really for the five community, which is the, so for Sturbridge, it would be some $172,000 for the, the cost savings. In analyzing the budget, there's approximately 32% of the total budget for the recurring costs is actually paid for by the State 911 Department. There is a, there are, there's support grants, as well as incentive grants. The incentive grants are for regional centers. And there's really quite a significant difference. So, it's about 32% of your costs are actually borne by the State 911 Department. Then there's capital costs that would be, that would be, that everybody really has to... To me, it's one of the most significant savings that you would have. We developed a, a plan of all of the equipment that you currently have and what would need to be replaced over the next five years. And that the State 911 Department, through their development, our regional development grant program, they do provide funding for that. So, what we do have is a cost savings for Sturbridge of some $266,000 that includes the $172,000 for the recurring costs, the year annual budget, the $172,000 for the recurring costs, your annual budget, as well as some $94,000 annualized for your capital costs. And that's, the most expensive items that you're going to run into is the radio systems, your consoles. All of those have a lifecycle, and as well as the dispatch furniture and the consoles that you see inside of the stations. But the most significant is really the radio systems, and the second largest item is really for information technology, the, not only the service that you have in the station as well as your, the software that runs that, and there's an annualized amount. So, I do put a chart in there for your recurring costs, and what you're currently receiving is $29,000 for support grants, and that with the regional center, it would total $597,000 for the, both for support and incentive for the five communities. There's been significant changes in how a dispatch center operates. You know, there was a time, I certainly remember, it was a, you know, as long as you could pick up a phone and you could key your mic, you could be a dispatcher. It is very different today. You know, the, not only the radio systems and the mapping systems and the information technology, it is a professional job today. It is not what dispatching was 10 years ago and 20 years ago, and it's not new to just this area, it's new to the country. Some of the new technologies is that there's mapping and wireless location, everybody knows about 911, and currently today, you know, they're developing wireless locations so you know specifically where it is. In 1987, I had a role in putting together the baseline for the wireless 911 in Massachusetts, and that you could not identify, it would go to the nearest cell site. Nearest cell site maybe at that time was three towns away, so you really couldn't get any specific location. It's getting better, it's not there yet, and they're doing some testing on it, but here it is, 2017, and you're still looking for the solution of wireless location specifically. Next Generation 911 is actually being implemented here in Massachusetts, has been implemented in many of the states, and it allows for the receipt of information from the social media and from video images and other electronic devices. People really believe that they actually can, through Facebook or other social media, that if they type in 9/11, or "I have an emergency," that somebody actually can receive that at the other end, and that really isn't the case. Next Generation is allowing that to occur, so it's just getting into that. FirstNet is, after 9/11, there was a, the first item, when they did the assessment after the tragedies in New York City and Washington, was that the, there was a tremendous difference between the regional, between radio systems for first responders, interoperability. So, that nationwide, they've been able to look at all of the radio systems, and they're in the process of implementing this FirstNet program. They've also enhanced, professional organizations have been able to work with first responders and dispatches for enhanced operational protocols. There are standards in that area now, as well as emergency communications, operations, and personnel, as I mentioned before, they are the new public safety profession. The role of State 911 Department is really quite significant. The funding that they receive from everybody's cell phone, there's a charge that's placed on everybody's phone every month, that is a substantial amount of money, and that, and they created, the State 911 Department, to make a more effective and economical 911 system. They have a goal, which is to reduce the number of public safety answering points. Currently, there's 134 of them that actually receive 10 or fewer 911 calls per day. When you consider about the investments that both the state and the federal government is putting into your 911 center, that's really not a very cost-effective way with 10 or fewer 911 calls per day. As I mentioned before, the regional centers do receive funding, not only to develop a new center, it's to maintain the equipment, and they also provide incentive money, which allows you to pay for the operations, so your annual operations are assisted with that, is supported incentive money. The development funds really are used for constructions, facility rehabilitation, design, equipment, including radio systems and security measures, and enhancements on the radio systems for regional centers are actually, it's one of the items that really is strongly supported by the State 911 Department. And as I mentioned, they also pay for an ongoing equipment replacement support. So, my recommendations was to create a regional dispatch district that would be, that had a specific purpose, one is to enhance emergency communication services to all of the communities, provide for a more robust emergency communication center. Having multiple dispatches on at one time allows you to manage more effectively a major event. It also provides some cost savings for all of the communities through a greater economy of scale, and also shift the cost of future replacement of communications equipment at the individual community level-based centers from the communities to the state through the regional center. Also wanted to leverage the capability of the regional center to enhance emergency medical dispatch as a single dispatcher performing emergency medical dispatch services, and there's specific criteria and all of that. At the same time, you're dispatching other units, and you can envision an accident on Route 20, that you're calling for other services, and you provide, at the same time, doing EMD, it's a single dispatcher, you're providing, you know, critical life-saving information to the person that you're speaking to, as well as to the person in the ambulance. So, it's, I don't know how they do it, I applaud them for doing what they're doing today, but it's a, it's a, to me, that is one of the most important items multiple dispatch center location could provide. Developed the center at the Wooded School at 660 Main Street in North Oxford. Also recommended the developing an outreach program to all of the communities to inform the citizens of the five communities and their public safety personnel of the timelines for the potential changes, the rationale for the change, and the benefits to them in the form of enhanced services. Also to develop a dispatch manual so that the protocols, they're standardized and uniform for all of the communities. The recommendation is to seek funding, regional development funding, through the town of Oxford, which would act as the fiduciary to convert the selected site. As part of that, they would convert the Wooded School into the center, the regional center, and they call it the Central Regional Emergency Communications Center. They would also include in that radio communications interoperability between the center and the police and fire departments of all of the communities, as well as to enhance security for the current public safety facilities during the times when the facility may not be staffed. The funding would also be used for new dispatch consoles and furniture, an administrative phone system between the center and the community police and fire stations, and as well as to provide a fiber optic connection between the center and the community police and fire stations, as well as to provide transitional training. And finally, to regionalize lockups, we did provide some recommendations on the potential of how that could be done with the five communities working together. They also made recommendations based on what I saw in the interviews, that create a plan for each community as to, for the, provide for the administrative support that the dispatches had been providing, and it gave some recommendations on some strategies on how to do that. Some of the benefits that we believe that is going to come from a regional center for all of the communities is for improved and standardized emergency communications dispatching services, provide a more robust center with multiple dispatches on duty each shift, provide for enhanced emergency medical dispatching, greater capability for major incidents, and would also allow for municipal solutions with like communities to a problem from a changing environment for emergency communications. A dedicated 911 funding stream, recurring costs are supported by the State 911 Department Incentive Program, and the capital costs and technology costs are reimbursed by the State 911 Regional Development Program. There would be cost savings with long-term economy of scale. In the process, I also provided a process on how to create the regional dispatch district. I made some information in the final report. I provided a draft intermunicipal agreement, a comparison of the various sites, the current equipment and technology, for the inventory that's currently in place, a step-by-step process for the creation of the center, a transition process, staffing and analysis, cost-benefit analysis, as well as the facility analysis. After, we have put together a list of the next steps. Today, the, today was the due date for the next round of funding from the State 911 Department. Oxford did prepare a grant to look at the redesign of that Wooded School, as well as to undertake some other functions, like developing the criteria for the requirements for the future equipment for all of the five communities, as well as to work with the architect and the design to ensure that there is going to be, that the current police and fire departments have, as well as current dispatches, have a significant role in identifying the layout of the regional center at the Wooded School. So, I'd like to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Greg?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Tom, you've been talking about the five towns.
Yes.
And, you know, that was in the initial role that you had in Oxford that night, and it was a pretty extensive presentation. But now, shortly after that, Spencer removed themselves from the game.
Yes.
So, now you're down to four towns.
Yes.
So, that all of the figures we have are really askew, they're not, they're not actually what's going to happen, they're not anywhere near what's going to happen with four towns. Do you have another town on tap that you're not telling us about, or is there something that's going to make five towns?
No, and actually, I did an analysis of the budgets for the four town, and actually the savings are, because there is not a, there is not a significant need for the, there was not a significant need for the number of dispatches because Spencer has dropped out, so that the...
I see that Spencer had a very high call count, but they also had a very high number, like 229,000 compared to Sturbridge.
Right.
So, that, you know, there was a considerable amount of money going in there, and $66,000 in savings or something like that, as I recall.
Yes.
For that one particular town, but a lot of money going out, so I mean, I'm having trouble getting my hands around the numbers exactly where this thing is going.
Sure. What I did is I analyzed the call volume for the remaining four towns, as well as the staffing that would be required, because it's about 92 percent staffing, it's the cost for the recurring costs, and that, so that the savings for Sturbridge would be some 182,000. Actually, the savings actually go up because the staffing needs go down, so that it's a, there is still savings, and I'll be more than glad to put together a memo when this happened, I'll send it out to Leon if you could send that to them, but...
The other question is, is that the building in Oxford, do you know how old that building is?
I'm sorry?
How old the building is in Oxford?
It was built in the 1930s.
1930s?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a solid wood frame, solid wood building, the whole deal. My question is, is to take five emergency dispatch centers, which are the lifeline of every one of those five towns, and putting that in a wooden building that appears to me to have not any kind of, you know, ballistic armament, hardening, nothing there at all except for a wooden building, you know, it would have the point to me that if I wanted to do some serious damage, I could get in an oil tank truck and hit that thing at about 80 and wipe out those five towns of communications, as could a tornado or something else where the building is really not hardened for the occasion. Not that I'm trying to talk down the program.
Sure.
But we want to make sure that if we're going to invest all our money in this building, that that building is going to be there come hell or high water. You know what I mean? It's going to have the best of generators, the best of equipment, the best of everything, but no matter what happens, it's got a chance of standing there.
Absolutely.
Because to take five towns out of the map in one shot, that is a disaster.
It is. You know, the reality is this redundancy that's really going to be built into the building so that the, all the criteria for new buildings for emergency communications, you know, requires the ability to communicate with all of the towns from a single site or any other site, so that you're always built in a backup, a regional center, and that's, analysis is done with the State 911 Department because they know the call volume that's going into that one location, so anything happens, and it's happened in some cities that actually where, you know, there was a flood.
We had Munson with the tornado, wiped the place out.
Exactly. And, so, these things do happen, you take into consideration all of those, you build that building, the enhancements that are going to be done, as strong as possible. It's not in the flood zone, it is, there will be emergency generators, there'll be a radio tower there that is backup with fiber that's going to be connected to all of the five communities, so that, you know, you build all of that backup system into it. If anything happens, you know, the State 911 Department does provide a, they actually have a mobile 911 center. You know, I saw it in Summerville.
Yeah, that was in Munson for months.
Exactly, and so, they do have backup systems, they also have immediately if a call is not answered within a certain number of minutes, and actually that call is actually routed directly to another center. The city of Boston has the State Police in Framingham, that's the backup center for there. So, all of those, all of... So all of those, all of those systems really do work like that.
And the last question, if you would.
Sure.
Where Spencer kind of pulled away from this project at this time, did you have like any kind of an exit interview or something like that to kind of get a feel for what their concerns were, what their issues were, and why they really didn't want to delve into it at this time? Did you share with us?
I mean, I didn't, you know, because that was, you know, I was not actually given the opportunity to go up and speak with the town manager and the chiefs. You know, I know that there was, I guess, until I interviewed them, I really, I'd only give conjecture on, you know, the rationale why they did that. I know that the, you know, as we went through the process, speaking with the town manager and the chiefs, they saw some significant benefits. The, certainly from the fire chief. The police chief, his only concern was whether he was going to have a, he was concerned about a dock station if in fact there were certain periods of the day that they actually wouldn't have anybody in the station. They were concerned about lockup, because currently Spencer is used as a regional lockup. So I know that those were the two items that I knew that were raised, you know, as we went through the process. But, I mean, were those the ones that actually pushed them to the making of the decision? I don't know that. I mean, I'm sure that I could find that out from the town manager.
Okay, Michael?
Okay. Craig touched on something that I had asked in, at the meeting in Oxford, which was, what if the C-Rac was destroyed by a tornado, or, you know, earthquake, or whatever? And I said, where would the calls go as a contingency plan? And I think the answer at the time was most likely some agreement would be made with someplace like the City of Worcester, or wherever, where the calls would automatically be switched over to the backup site.
Yes.
Is that still the plan? And has, have we done any contingency plan further than what was said in Oxford?
It is not, it is, it's done in conjunction with the State 911 Department. They also make agreements with communities to do that, to be the regional backup. And that, but everyone has to have one, you know, so that State 911. So if you roll this out over the next, this would be about a two-year process. So that would be one of those things. In all major, well, it's all modern regional emergency communication centers, they do require a contingency plan. So that it does address the issues that, you know, that you raised.
Yeah. I recall now you said the State 911 would, State 911 would help us find a backup.
Exactly. And some of that is, because they control the system, you know, the lines that actually go to every, every center. So they know the call volume, and they actually do that electronically, you know, from a, you know, from a single site. So it does happen.
I imagine for a facility like this, there would be some rather stringent guidelines or regulations by the federal and state government that would make it difficult for somebody to just walk on site and do some damage.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There's certain criteria for actually every public safety facility, every law enforcement facility that has a CGS network in it, which the regional center would have that, so for security reasons. See, this is one of those centers you can't walk into. The location where the wooded school is, it's really up and out of the way, you know, away from Route 12.
Yeah.
You know, I would feel pretty comfortable with the way it's situated up there as far as somebody, I mean, if somebody has the inclination to do damage, it's really going to be difficult, you know, considering the things that they have available to them for explosives and other things like that. And you take that into consideration as part of your contingency planning when you're assessing all of your risks.
So?
That's it.
Okay. One of my questions was why I did, what were the reasons that Spencer elected not to participate? But I have another question.
Sure.
You know, with any kind of regionalization, there's always an issue with decision-making process. In other words, let's say that we thought a certain budget increase or decrease, or we want to invest more, and the other, and we deem that to be in the best interest of Sturbridge, and other towns don't share that same vision. We're compromising our own independent decision-making. And the reason I, you know, this is always my concern with regionalization. I understand that there's cost savings, and we can probably improve technology because we're saving money. But when I think about Tantascor, we have a regional school system, and there's been times in the past where Sturbridge has wanted something, and the other towns do not, maybe because financially they can't afford it, and then we've reached stalemate. So I'm curious, how are those problems going to be resolved? Because now there's, I assume this board of directors are the decision-makers?
They are.
With respect to the budget? So is it just, how many people on it? Is it just plain majority? Do four towns all have to agree? Would it be three out of four now? How would disagreements with respect to the budget and investment be determined?
You know, I haven't seen the final, but I believe it's super majority, I believe, on the budgetary items for...
There were a couple of things that were super majority. One was if we were going to add or subtract a member, that had to be approved by super majority. I don't believe that the budget was, but all of that is...
Super or simple majority, did you say?
Super.
Okay.
So that would...
Which means three out of four.
Well, it would be three out of five, or, I mean, four out of five in the case...
Three out of four, because Spencer's out.
Yeah, correct. Which is also, in this particular case, majority, because you would need three out of four.
So our simple, our super majority and our simple majority are now the same?
Just coincidentally because of that number of participants.
Yeah, so, that's an issue of concern for me, because right now, we have a lot of independents. We go to town meeting, you know, we determine that we want another dispatcher, or increase the hours to be more accommodating service-wise. And I'm concerned with the other towns maybe voting something down where we want it. And I feel like we're going to sacrifice that by regionalizing.
There is a, there is something that they, I mean, obviously, the recurring budget, your annual budget, you know, all of the town administrators have a significant role in approving that. Actually, the director of the center actually puts the budget together, and they present it before the regional directors. The most significant cost items really comes into play for individual communities is in the equipment area. It's a, you know, one community may want to convert over some of their, you know, add additional portable radios, put additional laptops in their vehicles, both police and fire. So those are the, the only difference that I've seen, and I've seen others where they, where they've taken this regional approach, where they, the operations committee really comes together quite well. They have a common interest in all of that. And they've been able to address regional solutions, you know, like, giving an example, one up in Devens, they had a, which is now going to be seven communities in that district. They started with four, and they've, they added, they added two recently, and now they're adding a seventh. They had, one of the problems was, one of the communities, actually, two of the communities, had a difficult time managing the burn permit process, because it's an administrative, there's a lot of administrative elements to the burn permits and the oversight of it by the fire chiefs. And they, they took a regional approach to it, they were able to get the funding from the state, because the state will generally fund regional initiatives. And so what they ended up doing is that they had a, they were able to develop the software so anybody can go online, you know, and get a burn permit. They do it, the fire chief in that community oversees, you know, the approval process for that community. From the regional center, they're able to see what burn permits are actually being used, and they inform the people, both with their website as well as with the, with their emails, notify them that it's an okay day to burn. So they made it a very efficient system, because one community, actually, two of the communities were having a problem, and everybody benefited from it. So it's, if there's a, you know, for all of the equipment and initiatives like that, State 911 Department is really quite effective in being able to do that. They have, you know, they have a, you know, as far as additional dispatches, you know, during a certain hour of the day, and generally, that's done by the director, and it's, you know, you provide sufficient personnel. I don't know any director that actually is going to allow him or her not to have sufficient staff, because you just never know.
Right. But I mean, certainly, towns will disagree. I'm just, thank you, that was a very complete answer, but I guess there's no way of getting around the question of two towns want something, two towns don't.
Right.
What do you do?
Right.
That's where I'm coming from at this point. You know, what do you do? Yeah, let's just take something very straightforward and simple. We want an additional dispatcher. We have the funding, we want to, you know, have another dispatcher for whatever reason. We want our ambulance that's getting quicker response time, I don't know. Two towns agree, and two towns don't.
Well, you know, I mean, for Addons, the Regional Dispatch District can always receive money from any member community. So if a member community decides that I want an additional dispatcher, they can always do that.
Well, I know, but that dispatcher is now going to be shared among the four, right? One community is going to foot the bill in an area of disagreement like that, right? I mean, that's...
Sure.
So I can't imagine that...
Right.
...over big with residents. We want something, the other three towns don't, so we're just going to fund it ourselves, and the other towns are going to benefit without contributing to the cost.
Right. Generally, what you're going to run into on something like that is you're going to run into a fair, or a major event. So one community will identify the need for an additional dispatcher on that shift. Generally, the State 911 Department is pretty good about, you know, paying some of those additional costs. I don't know of anybody that actually has ever gone, had to go and fund something beyond what your allotment is, you know, according to your formula. So as far as, you know, that may not meet, you know, your needs.
Yep. Just one other question. With respect to this building in North Oxford, was that a private school? I'm not familiar, the wooded, who owns the building?
Oxford.
Oxford. Okay. So are they contributing the building to this endeavor, or is it going to be rented out? Is it going to be purchased?
Once they...
What is that?
Once they...
Set up on that?
Once they make their renovations using their capital dollars...
Yep.
They will, they will lease it to the Regional Dispatch District.
Okay.
And part of that is to, over a number of years, is to recover the investments, they just, whatever it's going to cost, you know, for those renovations. So they will recover that with...
Did you look at locations in other towns as well?
I did. I did. There were some seven locations. Every one of the communities had, had locations, and for one reason or another, we really couldn't, and actually, it's in the report where we use a number of criteria for the, you know, for that. And State 911 Department does not want you to build a new building, because that's probably the best solution. But they won't fund it. I mean, part of it is that you can do a renovation for $3 million, and a brand-new communication center could be $10 million. So that's what they've run into, is that, so they won't, unless there's no other option, then, so that's why you had to look at existing municipal buildings.
So I just, this is going to sound like a very basic question, but I just want to clarify. So if we sign an intermunicipal agreement and decide to regionalize, then we will no longer have any dispatcher at all at our own police and fire station? Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions.
My questions have been asked already, so I'm not going to, I'm certainly not going to go for redundancy. But Mr. Moran had a question.
Right. The one thing is, is that when you say there's going to be no dispatcher left in Sturbridge, that's going to be all of the phone calls, 911 and non-911 will be going to this dispatch center.
That's right.
Because in your costing figures, you're showing Sturbridge with $23.96 in 911 calls for a year. We probably do 2,300 calls a month on the telephone, if not more.
That's right.
You know, the call count here is really skewed for what that answering service or that dispatch center is going to do. The second thing is, is that for everybody's knowledge here, is that every point, they say they're going to cut down on 134 sites that have 911, you know, capability to answer a phone. Well, when you are issued a 911 dispatch center, you're issued what's called a PSAP, it's a public service answering point. And once you join this regional dispatch system, your public service answering point is taken away, and you do not get it back. If you want to, if you want to get out of that dispatch system, then you have to find another dispatch system that you can get into.
So no going back once you reach...
There is no going, once you're done, you will never answer another 911 phone in Sturbridge.
That's what they had told us that once before, too.
So you've got to be very careful how you do it and when you do it, because you're not going back. And there was a town, they caught me on a question at that last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was like down in Medway, down off of 146.
Yeah, it was in Hope Dale.
Yeah, Hope Dale, yeah.
And the town of Hope Dale backed out of the agreement that they had with our buddy, Ernie Horn there in Mendon. And evidently, Hope Dale didn't like it, so they backed out of Mendon's, and then they finally had to take refuse with the town of Upton. And basically, you're at Upton's, whatever they want to charge you, whatever they want to do, because you're the ones that needs the service.
Okay. So no decision needs to be made by the board at this time. However, the board has the opportunity now to decide if it wants to vote to continue in the program. So I think that's where we're at now. Is there a motion to, for anything, either to continue or not continue? Is there any motion that anyone on the board chooses to make at this time?
I'd like to make a motion, we continue this until we have all the members of the board present that can vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? So the motion has been made and passed that this will continue till all members are present.
We will, we'll continue to try to get some of the answers that you folks are looking for. I just want to point out that Chief Ford has been dedicating a lot of time and effort into this process over the last year and a half, and I want to publicly thank him for his involvement in this. I can tell you that we've had countless hours of meetings in Oxford, and in Charlton, and even in Sturbridge, talking about this issue, and we've collectively learned quite a bit. We've had a good working relationship with the dispatchers who've come forward to have joined our effort in studying this project, and we thank them for their involvement as well. I also want to thank the fire chief, our new fire chief, who's kind of jumped in to the deep end in a very short period of time, looking at this project. It is a very complicated one, and in some cases, many of the major decisions haven't been made. Certainly, the intermunicipal agreement would have to be looked at again to revise it for four communities as opposed to five. But I also know that we've been looking at building this project in such a way that capacity would be there that we could take another two, or maybe three or four communities that would dramatically change the landscape of this regional center if, if at all, you know, desirable down the road. And the last thing that I would say, and this is the, this is the main discussion that brought the initial participants into this project in the first place. We know that the State 911 system is looking forward to decreasing the number of PSAPs in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And, you know, they support them through this... And, you know, they support them through this grant process at a ever smaller, decreasing level, but at the same token, at some point, we know that it's, our days of operating our own PSAP may be coming to an end. And it's better to be a part of a process to create your own system as opposed to being stuck with the system that you might find yourself in. So, it was worthwhile to have this discussion. It's worthwhile to consider, continue this process and we'll continue to try to get answers to the questions that you folks will forward to us. Anything that comes to mind, and this goes for the citizens as well, if there are any citizens that would like to know certain questions about this type of a process, please let us know and we will endeavor to get good answers for all of these questions.
Thank you very much for coming.
A very thorough presentation.
I'd be more than glad to provide any information that you may need, any questions?
I will.
So, thank you. So, like I said, you have my email, so I.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Department Head Report, Police Chief Thomas Ford.
Madam Chair, while the chief is coming forward, I will tell you that Nelson Burlingame gave his regrets earlier today. Unfortunately, he will not be joining us. Just wanted to share that with you.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Madam Chair, earlier during the public announcements, you may have mentioned the fact that today, May 15th, by presidential proclamation is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, a day where we remember those officers who gave their lives or became disabled in the line of duty. In Sturbridge, we're not immune from this misfortune. In Massachusetts, we're not immune from this misfortune. In 2016, we lost a state trooper, Thomas Clardy, and a police officer from Auburn, Ron Tarantino. On September 15th in 1979, we lost a 26-year-old police officer here in the town of Sturbridge whose name is etched on the memorial that's being honored this week by police officers from all over the country. So, if I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a moment of, take a moment of silence here to honor those officers who've given their lives, have become disabled in the line of duty in this country. Thank you. The board has copies of my March report. As you can see, as with winter starting to pass and March coming and the spring coming in, you can see that our operational and training activities begin to pick up as well in our department. And you can see that we've had numerous trainings and quite a, quite a group of different operational incidents or occurrences that have happened. We've had, you can see in March, we've had people attend the next-generation 911, speaking of our 911 system, where you have Next Gen 911, which is now online, which has taken 911 calls to a whole new level. Now, you will get, and I didn't include this in your packet, so I apologize. You'll get pictures that are with the kind of clarity of a picture that's taken with your cellphone of the location of a particular 911 call. So, those responding, police, fire, and EMS personnel will have access to this as well as the dispatcher to give those responding units not only current and updated information, what the facility looks like and its location, but the GIS coordinates on this are, are very much up to date. As I look at the picture of our, our public safety complex, I can see that it's not your typical Google map. It's, it's a recent picture. It's something, so the satellites that they're using for these are pretty timely. So, we have, we have stepped into the next level of technology with our 911 system and there are many, many aspects of that. And if you'd like to know more about that, please feel free to ask the town administrator and I'll be happy to forward a packet to him about the capabilities of that system now. If there are any questions on March, I'd like to move, move on with April.
Any questions on March? No? Okay. Thanks, Chief.
It's a couple of highlights from our, from the April report that you have before Back in February, we began Senior Police Academy that we graduated on April 18th. We had full seats, we had approximately 26 attendants and it was, it was, it was quite well-received. The graduation ceremony was held at the Public Safety Complex and several officers participate in different classes that were put on. And I think that the attendant, that the attendees in their surveys that they left for us, well, I would probably say 65% of them didn't want to leave after April 18th. They wanted to stay on for another six or eight weeks. Unfortunately, we just didn't have a program that long for them. However, the next program that we have, they're certainly welcome back and they will be probably bringing others with them. We have conducted, both at the high school and at the elementary school, lockdown drills that are following the format of the Alice drills where they're barricading in place and we've had a few other aspects of that training that obviously is not, we don't want to keep out into the public, but the schools have been working very well with us and from that safety aspect. And it can, we continue to build a great partnership with the school system and we continue to work on the safety of the children and, and the personnel that are working inside of the school and giving them options, more so than just to close the doors and pull the shades down. If there are any questions on my April report, I'd be happy to answer those questions now.
Any questions on April?
I just have a couple. I noticed, I could have asked it in March, but I'll ask about April because you seem to have three. Under the school calls, I really like the fact that now we get a breakdown of that. We haven't always had that. But I noticed this, there were two investigations at the high school and one at the junior high. What exactly did those involve?
Some of them I may not be able to comment on, but I'll do my best if you could bear with me for a second. Do you want to go to March or April?
Well, I guess April had two at the high school, so I guess let's go to April. Actually, March had three. I mean, were they, to the extent you're able to comment, were they safety issues, were they health issues or?
I'm sorry, but a lot of that information, I'm not going to be able to, to give out, but they are incidents that may have involved some level of incident with, with a student or damage to students' properties, et cetera, that may have required, you know, if the investigation of an officer or the response of an officer to conduct an investigation. Again, I'd feel, I'd probably feel better speaking about the, the condition of these investigations.
Not in public.
Unless, unless public forum. However, they, they, some have criminal aspects to them and some don't.
Okay.
Any others?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Before the chief leaves, there's a couple of things that I'd like to have the board take advantage of while he's here. The first is in your agenda package later on, you'll notice that I had the, the policies and procedures for the board for their review. They were for administrative functions, direction and responsibilities and departmental vehicles. There were some amendments to the standard operating procedures of the police department for the board's concurrence.
Any questions on those?
Yeah, the, the question I had is that, that the vehicles were in the, we've got a schedule of review of, for review of the various chapters of policies and procedures and that. Those were scheduled for 2018, but Chapter 100 and Chapter 400 is scheduled for 2017. I just got a question about the scheduling.
Is that for the police department's policies review?
Yeah, that was this.
The, the, these, these amendments or these repairs were deficiencies that were identified during our assessment for our accreditation.
Okay.
And they're very minor in language as to sergeant taking a review of a cruiser, where it once said, "An inspection shall be done." It didn't say who was supposed to do it. So, we changed the language, say, "A sergeant shall be the one responsible for conducting the overview of an inspection on a car." They're very minor modifications to the, to the policies that were, repairs that were done as part of our accreditation.
Okay. So, it's, this policy, these policy updates aren't part of the normal schedule for review?
No, they're not. And we, and, and as you will, as you will continue to get these corrections over time as the law, we have, we have laws that get changed with respect to public, public intoxication now with the opioid crisis now. Now, our protective custody laws have changed. So, we have to take that new protective custody law and adopt it into our, our policies. So, you'll get a copy of that updated policy as, as we've, as we've taken the corrective action and it'll come before the board for that correction. And it may not fall under that same schedule. So, periodically, you'll have those come before the board.
Okay. I, I had just presumed this was part of the normal schedule and review and it's, it's not. So, that answers my question.
Thanks.
Chief, while you're here, we want to take this opportunity to congratulate the town of Sturbridge's Police Department on your being awarded reaccreditation by the Massachusetts Police Association. It certainly is a feather in our cap as a community and it speaks volumes of your department. Congratulations, Chief, and please extend that, this congratulations to all members of your department.
Great. Thank you. Yes, it was a very proud moment on May 3rd to be part of that as the Massachusetts Accreditation Commission presented us with, with reaccreditation. And I want to thank Lieutenant Mark Salio, who's our accreditation manager, who did a lot of work, the men and the women of the Sturbridge Police Department who uphold the standards each day and our policies each day and fall in compliance with the rules and regulations that we have and have established that make us who we are and make us a great department. So, I'd like to thank, thank all the, all the, all the men and women and anybody that works there at the Sturbridge Police Department for their help, participation.
Thank you, Chief.
And thank you for the recognition. It means a lot. Thanks.
Thanks.
We also, we also understand that in your motorcycle unit, you're adding, you're adding to that division a little bit to try to save a life, I understand?
Oh, on the, on, from the SEMLEC side.
SEMLEC side.
Yes. From, from the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council, the council that we have, we have a, a motor unit, within the motor unit, we have recently, through the Auburn Police Department, we're trying to establish a new program to integrate a paramedic into the motor unit itself to have an officer, I mean, a, a paramedic in the unit to ride with the officers, someone that's trained to that EMT level, that's able to respond to an incident in an instant. Where we have the Boston Marathon that we participate in, the Pan-Mass Challenge that we participate in, and we, we move hundreds of people over hundreds of miles in these different various events throughout the year. And we've had a couple of accidents and we've had a couple of accidents on some back roads where we've had to wait 20, 25 minutes for emergency medical services to arrive outside of the police officers that are there administering first aid to have a, and we are working towards having a paramedic who's going to go through motor officer school, who will be there just to support services to provide emergency medical care at a paramedic level, advanced life support there in a very timely manner, almost an instant, that'll be embedded with us in the SEMLEC motor unit. So, that's, that's something that just went before the, the Auburn Board of Selectmen last month, last week. And we're working with Chief Coleman from the Auburn Fire and Rescue, Chief Lucas from the Auburn Fire Department, Auburn Police Department, and the members of the SEMLEC Motor Unit are working towards that.
I understand it was very well-received.
It was. And it looks like Auburn, the Auburn Board of Selectmen overwhelmingly supported it and it's moving forward and they're, and I think it's going to, I think it may be contagious, but it's good to have that level of care available to us in any function and be able to maneuver as the motorcycles do through the, through the heavy traffic.
And again, our Chief Ford is in charge of the SEMLEC Motorcycle Unit, so it's another, another feather in our cap as far as his direction and his capability.
It is.
And his forward-lookingness.
Thank you. We need to adjust vote on those policies. We didn't do that. So, before he leaves, do I have a motion on the policies?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Vote carries four to nothing. Thank you very much, Chief.
Have a good night, Chief.
Have a great evening.
Fire Chief John Grasso. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I believe you all have a copy of my March and April reports. Prior to taking some questions, I did want to bring you up to speed on a couple of things and kind of give you a little bit of a heads up on what's coming in the future. We're continuing with our blood pressure clinics. We're doing sometimes two, sometimes three a week, depending on how the facilities can accept our services, but we've been doing them at the Senior Center and some of the other facilities in town and they seem to be very well-received. I think up to date, we have taken somewhere in the area of 150 to 175 blood pressures. So, I think that's a very good start. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of, pending approval at town meeting, two projects we're hoping to get off the ground. One is a public CPR program where we can offer CPR classes to stakeholders, citizens of the community, residents, business owners, employees, that kind of stuff. And we will be doing that at the firehouse with certified CPR instructors. The other project that we're hoping to get off the ground is a house marking system where the fire department will provide a reflective sign and install it to assist us in locating some of the addresses that are a little bit hard to find. It will be open to anybody who, who is interested in having it done. We will provide the materials. We will ask them to assist us with the cost of those materials, but we will provide the labor as well.
Nice. Very good. Do you have anything that you want to highlight in your reports? I know this is like your first time, so.
The one thing I would like to highlight is, is more of an apology. I, I just noticed as I was reviewing them that in the April report on page three of the report where it lists the Fire Chief's monthly report by code, the 2017 year-to-date numbers toward the, the right-hand side of that page are the same numbers as the March report. And I apologize for that. I think our, our spreadsheet formula didn't carry over, but I can provide you with the corrected numbers for fire should be 14. The next category down should be four.
If you send those to me, I can forward it to the board.
Okay. The, the important note there is that our, our cost per service continued to, to increase. They stay varied. We're, we're continuing to provide an all-hazards approach to emergency services and those numbers continue to increase month after month.
Are there any questions of the chief?
I just have one on reading the pie. I love your charts, by the way, but.
March or April?
Well, April, the 31%, the tone log, you have your ambulance, fire. Is that, is that the same like in March station coverage? Because you know, in March, you show mutual aid.
We actually, we actually did the tone log in a bar chart in March. I, I apologize for that. We did a tone.
Well, you did it both. I mean, you have the pie, too.
Oh, tone log, okay.
Yeah, no, you have the pie. I just, in the April one, the 31%, you just don't have the key of what that is, so I'm assuming it's station coverage like the one in March.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you had no mutual aid in April?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions of Chief Grasso? Any questions for us?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
While the chief is here.
Well, we'll see him, yeah.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, while the chief is here, I will say that at our next meeting of the board, we will be presenting our recommendations on the recent RFQ process for the used fire truck as authorized by the last town meeting and we should have that for you at your next meeting.
So, it won't be on tonight?
No, we won't be doing it tonight.
All right. Thank you. Chief, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to ask Kevin Filczek, our Economic Development Tourism Coordinator, to come up for two items to discuss with the Board of Selectmen. The first is a proposed TIF policy for. The first is a proposed TIF policy for, well, one of our town goals, you may recall, Madam Chair, is that we develop a handful of policies for consideration by the Board of Selectmen this upcoming year. And one of them was a proposed TIF policy. And I'm not going to steal Kevin's thunder, he's worked very hard on this and the next item for discussion. But in your agenda packages, you have a memo dated May 11th, 2017, from Kevin outlining the proposed TIF policy and the highlights, and I'm going to ask him to share his recommendations with you at this time.
Kevin, before you start.
Sure.
Please accept our thoughts for you. We know that you had a recent loss in your family.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So regarding the TIF policy, one of the, one of my goals in drafting for you was to create a process that was transparent and really very clear, so that everyone from residents to the businesses to town staff could understand it and really understand each step in the process. But the big question was to try to answer that whole but-for question that commonly plagues a lot of TIFs throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country, which is, you know, how do you know that a project actually needs a TIF? And the policies that I put forward tonight actually hopefully address that question. So I provided you with a memo that kind of summarized the policy, I provided you with the policy for tonight, I was kind of really just open for questions if you had any concerns or comments on what I wrote for you.
The policy itself is dated April 26th, I believe, in your agenda packages?
Yes, it's six pages, right there.
Kevin, can you give us, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, through you, can you give us a little bit of an explanation as to how you, how you approach this task in developing the TIF policy?
Sure, so what I did was, I looked through what other towns in the Commonwealth did for their TIF policies. Not every town does, you have to really look at a lot of the larger communities. So I used Lowell, Springfield, Northampton, West Springfield to try to draft the policy. And the first part really is, just really comes straight from the Mass Office of Business Development. That is pretty much cookie cutter, what they say is writing your policy. The, that goes for, you know, defining what a, what an STA is, which is the Special Tax Assessment, and then is, same for the TIF or the Tax Increment Financing. All that comes straight from either MOBD or Department of Revenue. The part that really is relevant to, that is really Sturbridge specific, starts on page four, and that is the requirements for the town, so what is it that we're looking for? And in essence, again, we're looking for, does it bring jobs? Does it increase our hotel motel revenues? Is it on a priority development site? Does it occupy a vacant building? Does it support our master plan? Does it increase the number of visitors? Things like that. And it also specifies, you know, how far along are they in the process? Are they actually trying to get a building permit at this time, which would in essence preclude it from a TIF or an STA? Are they, you know, or, you know, and again, I think point five actually says it quite clearly, you need to demonstrate that you actually need this. You need to demonstrate that you need this incentive. And then, and those, these points come from discussions that I've had with the town administrator, discussions I've had with other staff, as well as what best practices from other communities. The approval process, again, that comes mostly from MOBD. The only addition would be the, the tax, the TIF Review Committee, the TRC, which I am recommending we create, which would be a committee that would be made up of myself, the town administrator, the town planner, and the town assessor, and a member of the Board of Selectmen, which would actually review the TIF application the moment it comes in. So before, before it comes to the Board of Selectmen for approval, we would review it, provide our input and provide our suggested course of action. So this is kind of an amalgamation of what the state says and what we've seen as either a need or something that is important to the town of Sturbridge.
Are there any questions? Michael?
Yeah, one thing I saw in here, and I think was a good addition, was in the Sturbridge portion of the policy. This policy gives the Board of Selectmen considerable discretion on a project that benefits the town. You outline what we're looking for, but I like the fact that you put that in there because TIFs aren't all cookie cutter TIFs. Each one's individual, and so that was a good portion of the policy, and I appreciate that you included that in there. Also, the policy is that Sturbridge prefers TIFs, and we don't really do STAs. Could you explain to the board why that is?
Sure. So it really boils back down to, A, best practices, and B, the difference between what an STA is versus a TIF. So if you look on page two, under Special Tax Assessment, an STA exempts a percentage of the total property tax assessment on the real property value of the parcel. So if a parcel is valued at $500,000, we say, you know, knock 20% off, that's $100,000 off of the tax value of that property. Whereas a TIF, which, if a building is, say, valued at $100,000, and you add $400,000 of improvements to it, so it's $500,000 value now, we still tax the full $100,000 valuation, we're just adding, we're just reducing the tax burden on that $400,000 of investment. So it's less of a hit to the town by supporting a TIF as opposed to supporting an STA, which is why our preference, just from a, in terms of what we receive in property taxes, it's better to have a TIF in the long term.
I think we look at it as it's a shared benefit. It's a shared benefit both for the town but also for the business, the business partner. And I'm glad, Mr. Supernat, that you called out the issue of giving ourselves a little bit of flexibility. Kevin and I spent a lot of time making sure that the, that the document reflected that because there might be times when our stated goals may not be met 100%. However, that stills may prove to be an economically viable and prudent project for the community, that we wanted to make sure that you folks had that flexibility. It doesn't work on the state's side. The state's standards are pretty black and white, as they must probably have to be. However, we gives ourselves a little bit of flexibility when it comes to these. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Kevin? We don't have to vote on any of those, though.
You can, yeah, this is a policy coming before the board.
Okay, is there a motion?
I just want to ask one. Can I just, I'm sorry. I just, going back to the criteria.
Sure.
I do, I do agree with Mike, I like the paragraph that says that each has to, you know, look at the merits of each individual project. I wonder if we should put an actual criteria that is somewhat of a catch-all that says, you know, the project has special assets that are not necessarily listed above. I still wonder if we're being a little bit too limiting in recognizing only those criteria.
Page two?
Page four of six.
Okay, all right.
We list, the town's criteria are listed below in no particular order. And then we have a list of criteria.
Yes, sir.
And the next paragraph is helpful, but I wonder if there should actually be a criteria that says, a criteria on that states, there may be special aspects of a particular project that are in the best interest of Sturbridge and our economic development that may not, that we may not know about right now in terms of listing it as a criteria. Probably not making myself that clear.
No, no, you're making yourself perfectly clear.
But you know, I can't even envision a certain project, but maybe it's not going to bring in the employment opportunities, and it's not a project to priority site, and it's not in our master plan.
How about if I can propose some language for you?
That would be great.
And certainly, I mean, it's a starting point for discussion. Maybe something along the lines that says the proposed investment has a demonstrated benefit to the, what are we calling it? I'm sorry, the TIF Review Committee?
I would.
To the town.
To the town, I would say.
To the town as recognized by the, giving the committee the ability to, on the fly, create a standard based upon what you're trying to suggest.
That's what I'm looking for.
Maybe I wasn't good coming up with the right language.
No, it was I, but we know what we mean, so if you can work on language, that would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
So I don't want to be in a situation where we say, well, you know, we have our listed criteria, then there's no flexibility for approving it.
Understood.
So is there a motion with that caveat?
I'll make a motion with the language that has been described by.
Selectmen Dowling?
Selectmen Dowling, and for the town administrator to, to complete the detailed description.
Is there a second?
There is.
No, go ahead. It's okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Thank you. Kevin and I will work on that, and we will.
Really good job.
We'll send you folks a updated version, and when I update your policy book, the updated version will be in your policy book. The secondary item that we are here to discuss this evening is, as you may recall, part of our obligations under the two proposed TIFs that are coming before the town at the special town meeting to be held on June 3rd, commercial for the June 3rd town meeting, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, is the, is that you folks have to review and at some point agree to the TIF agreement for both the Public House and for Arland Tools and Manufacturing. In your agenda packages, you will find a memo dated May 11th, 2017, with the attachments for both Arland Tools and Public House Service Corp., number one. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to kind of walk you through the agreements. You will find that both of them are very similar in structure and format to some degree, and have been reviewed by our friends and partners at MOBD for, for any final comments and considerations. And I'll turn it over to Kevin to kind of fill in the blanks.
Yes, and just to expand on what the town administrator was just saying, this has also been shared with both Arland Tools and the Public House, and they've both reviewed it, and they agree with the current version as it's for you this evening. So in, in general, the Public House, I'll start with that one just because it's a little bit simpler, the Public House agreement is almost identical version to what you saw a few weeks ago when I was here with, with the Public House. Nothing has really changed except for the font. So that TIF is a 10-year TIF, it'll run from January, or sorry, July 1 of 2018 will run through June 30 of 2028. In the memo, I describe what their responsibilities are, which are build the hotel, create eight jobs first year with two more in the subsequent years. They're going to hire from the south central economic target area with a preference for Sturbridge residents. They'll notify us of any sales, and they'll provide us with yearly updates on employment, financial contributions to the town, private investments, et cetera. From our responsibilities, we are, we agree to exempt them at the property rate exemption that is in the memorandum, and we agree to make people aware of this for the town meeting, which we've done through the town warrant and through these meetings. We also reserve the right to decertify the project if it fails to attain or sustain 80% of the initial investment and fails to meet its employment goals. The Arland Tools, are there any questions on the Public House before we move on to Arland?
Anybody on the board, any questions? Okay.
For Arland, it's slightly different just because the nature of their project is different from what the Public House did. So Arland Tools is not creating jobs directly. They are creating a office building which then they would hire tenants, or they would bring in tenants who would therefore, who would employ people. So all references to employment have been removed with some exceptions. We still are going to require them to provide us with information on employment levels of the facility, so if business A comes in, we need to know that they have three employees. That's the kind of information that we're looking for in their yearly updates to us. In addition, we're asking to know how many vacant, vacant spaces they have in that building at the end of every year. Additionally, whereas if, under the Public Houses, if they were to sell to any other business, they would have to notify us. For Arland Tools, if they sell to any other business that is not one of the Arland Tools under the umbrella of Arland Tools, they have to notify us. So if Arland Tools has another LLC that they own, they can transfer to that LLC, and that's fine, but if they sell it to, say, GE, they have to tell us with a six-month notice. Apart from that, those are the only.
Excuse me?
Big differences, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Back years ago, we had a similar TIF program on the OFS building over on Hall Road.
On Hall Road, yeah.
Remember that? And there was a codicil in there that said that if, if the owner of that property sold the property during the term of the TIF, that the TIF would terminate at that particular time. In other words, it wouldn't carry on.
We have in our.
Do you have anything like that in this, sir?
Under, if you look under, on the last page of the agreement, under, under section C.
Additional provisions?
Additional provisions pursuant to 760 CMR 22205, this agreement should be binding upon subsequent owners of the property. So.
So this TIF will transfer to subsequent owners? Is that correct, man?
Believe I'm correct in that, saying that.
Yeah, is that correct?
Yes, the agreement and the provisions of the agreement would be binding upon subsequent owners of the property, meaning that if we, if they sold it off to another entity, if they, you folks have the right to decertify it if they're not meeting the standard goal, the stated goals of the project. However, if they are meeting the goals, the TIF would be subject, the provisions of this TIF would be subject upon the subsequent owners of the property.
However, and again, if they were to do this to another company that, again, say they sold to GE or something, we would know about it six months in advance prior to sale and transfer of ownership.
So that, that TIF is actually a cash value basis to the seller and no basis to the town?
Well, our obligations and our benefits would stay the same presumably. If they were not staying the same, we would have the ability through the Board of Selectmen to terminate said TIF agreement. Are you, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but are you looking for us to review that language with perhaps the buyer, I mean, the business owner, to see if we would maybe amend that to say it will not be binding on, without permission of the Board of Selectmen? Something a little bit less automatic? Is that?
I would look for something to the point that the, the TIF agreement would remain in place for as long as the original ownership of the TIF stays in place. In other words, if we're down three years at 90% tax-free on the TIF, and all of a sudden they decide to sell the business, that additional terms, if it's a 10-year TIF, has a lot of dollar value to it that is going to go out the window with the sale. In other words, that's a cash component of the sale. Whereas if the TIF ended with the sale, all right, then there is no cash component that would, you know, force the owner of the property to go and get the money away that the town would, you know, necessarily be fronting to the, to the, to the owner for, you know, bringing his property up to spec and putting a new business in Sturbridge.
I think, sir, you are missing the first clause of that sentence, that paragraph. I believe that this specific issue is detailed in 760 CMR 2205, and I wonder if the law had changed since the OFS project had happened, that, you know, Kevin, did you research that?
I'm not aware of that. I can get back to you on that.
Why don't we get back to you on that project?
It had, there was another name for that. What was the name of that property before OFS had it?
Specktrian.
Specktrian, bingo. By God, Ed, I'm glad you're here.
So.
That's another Ed.
So in the issue of time, because I know we have quite a few things still on the agenda, perhaps what I will do is Kevin and I will go back and we will, we will grab that citation, and we'll bring it with us the next time that we bring this up, because I believe Mass General law may have changed since the OFS project was developed X amount of years or so ago, which speaks to that direct point. But I don't want to say. of years or so ago, which speaks to that direct point. But I don't wanna say specifically that that's the answer. Uh, Mr. Philcheck and I will go back-
You can, you can see what I'm looking at.
I, of course, I do. Um, but I believe that you will find, if I'm a betting man, that you will find that, that citation speaks directly to that change of laws.
Okay.
Because I, yeah, I, and that's not in our, I didn't see that in our model TIF policy, that it's automatically going to, we just don't address it, right?
The TIF policy in, in general for, for what was written really just discusses how we will-
Right, that's what I thought.
...review and approve of a TIF. It doesn't go into the, to the nitty-gritty, 'cause that's really mass general law that-
Right. 'Cause I wouldn't wanna see it in that, 'cause I, I, I somewhat agree with, um, Selectmen, Marianne.
So Leon will get back to us?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll put it, why don't we just put it on hold till the next, next time we get together?
Yeah, I have one brief question. I, you know, I don't have the, the last agreement that we saw in front of me, but I, for, with respect to Arland Tool, I thought there might have been, uh, an employment goal in the original one we saw?
No.
No? There was never, never an employment-
The only draft policy, I mean, agreements that you may have seen were probably for the one for Public House, and that does have a-
Oh, I thought-
If there was one that was that, it was a previous draft version, and it might've been in there prior to our negotiations with Arland Tools. So it might've been an early iteration of-
It was an early iteration.
Yeah, I, 'cause I, I think I-
And there were dates that were wrong, you know?
I, I do recall that one, and yes, that was prior to our discussions with Arland Tools when, um, where we did have those conversations about the employment. So, so that was an early version that, that is no longer, uh, running.
And it's, it's not feasible to have an employment goal on that.
Well, only because they're not the ones hiring, you know? They're, they're basically hiring, uh, bringing in tenants-
Yeah.
-who may hire fifty or may hire one, depending on what their business is.
But either way, I, oh, sorry. But either way, at the end of the year, we will still know what their employment levels are. So as opposed to with the Public House, you know, they'll bring in the tenants or they'll bring in the employees and we'll know their numbers, we'll just have a, a total for Arland Tools building.
Well, I would hope with forty-three thousand square feet of office space that we would have more than one in most of the-
Oh, forty, there would be. But, but we just can't hold them to a number because, like we said, we don't know if it's going to be, um, manufacturing or if it's going to be, uh, an office with a, an attorney and a, and a secretary. At, at the end of the day, we, we're, we don't know, and, and to be fair to Arland Tool, they wouldn't know either.
Right.
You know? The building isn't even built yet. We, never mind, never mind marketing who's gonna be living or working there, I should say.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
To our town administrator?
Yes, I will, uh, attempt to go quickly through town administrator's, uh, town administrator's update. As you know, we have, uh, quite a laundry list of items, uh, under town administrator's update to, uh, here tonight. First, I just want to publicly announce that the town has received, uh, their check for PEG support, which is our public access, uh, monies to the tune of one hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, that is part of our license agreement that we have between the Town of Charter and, uh, the Town of Sturbridge and Charter Communications. Um, I am announcing, uh, or at least I am proposing a new committee, a special events committee, as a result of one of the Selectmen's goals for 2017. Uh, in your agenda package, I have given you a copy of that announcement that I would like to just run by with the Board of Selectmen tonight, and if the Board of Selectmen is in concurrence, I will begin advertising for this committee immediately. I'm proposing a special events committee, which would be a temporary committee at this time, whose mission would be to work with the town committees and departments to establish, uh, special events in the community designed to build interest in the town, excite community experi, uh, spirit, encourage more hotel room rentals as well as restaurant visits. The meetings will be held as needed and are likely to be held in town hall during daytime hours. I'm proposing the member, the committee membership of the committee to be, uh, five members. One, a member of the Board of Selectmen. Two, a member of the STA or a tourist-related business. Three, a member of the recreational committee. Four, a member of the cultural council, and one, a member of the community at large. And we may look at maybe approving additional members if we feel that the, um, uh, the committee needs some more assistance and that the town administrator would dissolve the committee when the task is either complete or as necessary. I wanna give you just a brief update as to why, uh, I brought this forward. Uh, as you know, one of our town goals was to, um, to bring more special events to the Town of Sturbridge. And certainly, um, there are a lot of different entities in this town where, uh, they can play a role in helping with that. Over the last several months, I've had the opportunity to make presentations not only to the recreation committee and to the STA and to the cultural council, and they all have expressed an interest in being part of this effort. Um, we think that this could end up being, um, a governing board that kind of helps facilitate these, and then each individual project may have their own individual board. Like, for example, and I'm not gonna propose that this is gonna be a suggestion, but if we were to decide that we wanted to create a speakers bureau here in the Town of Sturbridge where four or five, uh, programs are developed throughout the town, um, we may involve, um, the STA in aspects of that. We may involve the recreation committee in that. We certainly might involve the cultural council through their granting opportunities through that. And, um, having a member of the Board of Selectmen to kinda keep us all on track, I think would be a very helpful, um, and viable, um, option. Um, I, I, I will defer to any questions. Otherwise, if, uh, there are no questions, I would ask for your concurrence on the creation of such a committee.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Um, this is great. I know that I've been one of the ones that want more special events.
Well, I felt for sure that you would be the, uh, Selectmen liaison, but I would leave that to the board to determine.
I'm just wondering, um, I don't mean to put Kevin on the spot, but I kind of envisioned the, the, that position that Kevin holds, the tourist coordinator, to be integral to forming some more special events.
Right, so you'll find that-
So is he a member of this committee as well?
Voting member, no.
Okay.
Because, I mean, he is a, um, he is an employee of the town. Um, I prefer to see residents of the town and business people of the town. Uh, certainly, he would staff this board and he would work very closely, as would, uh, the town administrator work very closely with this board. Certainly at the initial phases while they're getting going, I anticipate that Kevin will staff this. You'll also remember that Kevin's position is still only at, uh, less than full-time hours. So-
Okay.
-we are getting more than our value from him. However, uh, I also don't wanna, uh, put the burden on, on the planning and, and organizing of all of these events just on one individual while he's still doing the economic development and the tourism promotion component of the job. This is, special events is important, but it's one of the many umbrellas that he's holding up to try to, you know, keep things moving in the town.
Okay, no, so that's great. And you don't view this as being redundant to why we form the STA?
Well, the STA's mission is quite, quite different in a lot of, uh, capaci, in a lot of ways. The STA, um, certainly their, the goals are going to overlap a little bit, um, but certainly the STA, you'll remember, is not necessarily made up of all town residents. You may find people who are business people, but getting them to be the ones who kinda plan and coordinate the, the activities that were gonna be happening, I think is a broader net than what just the STA's vision really encompasses. That's why I wanna incorporate more of a folk, uh, more of a, uh, focus of, um, uh, community involvement in this. That's why the community at, member at large. That's why the cultural council, I think, is such an integral part of this. Speaking to the cultural council and the recreation committee, excited about the opportunity. And, and one of the things that Kevin and I, I didn't realize he was still here until you, you pointed him out. One of the things that Kevin and I found, uh, interesting, uh, was that there are events going on within the community that other town departments and boards and committees don't even know about. When we had an event recently at the Federated Church for a jazz festival, it was jazz, correct?
Yes.
It was sponsored by the cultural council. Kevin's office did not know about it. The STA didn't know about it. Recreation didn't know about it. I didn't know about it. It was poorly attended, and the, and when it was brought to my attention, well, how can this be? I said, you're right. How can this be? And, and we've started to build through Kevin's assistance, we started to go out on a world tour of all of our little boards and committees to say, hey, listen, this is who we are. This is how we can help you. This is how we can help each other. Let's all row in the same direction. And, and, and moving forward, we've built, uh, I think we built quite a few bridges that didn't exist before. Cultural council, I don't wanna, uh, I'm not throwing stones when I say this. The cultural council has kind of lived in its own world for a long time without the active involvement of the town administrator or participation of, say, the Board of Selectmen. We didn't have Kevin's position this time last year. This, this is an opportunity to kinda build, uh, you know, a big boat that we all can go in the same direction on.
Okay, no, that's great. So the, this committee, this special events committee, could move forward with a proposal to present to the STA for funding?
And to the recre, and the cultural council.
'Cause obviously they have no, this committee is gonna have no funds at all. It's going to be an idea generating committee.
What we were gonna work very closely with this committee for is, at least in the short term, is come up with, and I'm envisioning public meetings and public hearings, maybe hearings is a, a bad terminology, but certainly public hearings, uh, public meetings where we can get solicitation from the citizens at large. Listen, you live in Sturbridge. What kinds of things would you like to see in this town that we can probably help bring to this community? What are the things that would make this community stronger, um, and more vibrant place to, to live, work, raise a family, those types of things? That's the, that's the purpose of this commi, this committee. Maybe we can set ambitious goals, uh, you know, two years from now, we would like to do these couple of things. Three years from now, we'd like to do this. In ten years, we'd love to be doing A, B, and C and build the support mechanism. You know, I, I, when I worked in another town of, uh, of East Long Meadow, one of the big events that they do every year is their Fourth of July Parade. They've been doing this Fourth of July Parade for probably, let's just say thirty-something, some odd years. This thing is something that starts the planning on July 5th and goes to the following July 4th. This is a major undertaking involving hundreds of volunteers. Certainly, we're not as a town going to be able to pull that off for 2018. But if we can set a, a short-range and a long-range plan as to the types of things that we would like to see working in our, uh, uh, happening in our community, that's the vision that I think that we have for this type of a committee.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote carries four to nothing.
Thank you. Um, yes?
Too needily is on now or later?
You can vote that now if you wish, if you would prefer to have a full board when that happens.
Oh, we can do that.
We can do that too. I, I don't wanna-
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Um, AMVets, Mr. Moran, uh, is once again looking for a Selectmen to speak at their annual meeting to be held on June 9th through 11th at the Sturbridge Host Hotel. Uh, the actual event is going to be, uh, June 10th at 9:30 a.m. Uh, they're looking, excuse me, for a two-to-five-minute speech just greeting the delegates from the AMVets. If anyone is, uh, able or willing to speak at their annual meeting. They are specifically looking for a-
I have a previous engagement from June 10th, I'm sorry to say.
Oh.
Why, I'd be glad to do it. I've tried it twice already. Twice I've gone there and there's been nobody there to talk to, so.
Is there anyone else who would like to do this?
Can we let you know at the next meeting?
No, because, well, the next meeting is-
No, you can let me know before the next meeting.
Yeah, because it's-
I can't let you know tonight.
June 5th. I gotta-
Although they would like a response by June 2nd. Um, Johnny, I keep saying June 3rd, it's June 5th.
I mentioned June 20th.
Don't come on June 3rd. It's not, it's, that's not the day of telling me. Uh, they do, they would like a note, uh, uh, by June 2nd. So if anybody is able to make it, just let me know before June 2nd and I'll share that.
Okay.
Um, I would ask, uh, or I would respectfully request the ability to carry over sixty-two hours of vacation time as I start my third year as your town administrator.
Uh, do you need a vote?
You've always voted in the past.
All right. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that, um, Leon can extend his vacation, uh, carry-
No, carry over.
No, extend. Wouldn't that be nice? To carry over his vacation time, um, beyond this year, to the next fiscal year, is that-
Contract year.
Uh, contract, yeah.
'Cause I-
January, right.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Discussion?
Now, this is six, sixty-two hours from the first year?
No.
That's what it says.
No. I would, uh, I'm asking to carry over sixty-two hours of vacation time to my third year on the job.
Yeah, this one says from my first year. From my first-
Oh, it should be from my second year.
From your second year to your-
From the second year.
Second year.
Yeah.
Second.
We'll go with that.
To type one.
We'll go with that.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I would like to comment that, that, uh, you, you really, uh, deserve your time off and vacation time.
I know.
And, um, you work hard, you do a good job.
You're the only one who-
Take it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Thank you. I would ask that for the concurrence of the reappointment of Nelson Berlin Game as our building inspector and ADA coordinator, his, uh, his commission expires in May. It's one of the only ones that sp, uh, expires on a different timeframe.
There a motion?
I make a motion to concur with the town administrator's recommendation to reappoint Nelson Berlin Game as building inspector and ADA.
Is there a second?
Coordinator.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, the one thing here, there's a, there's also something tied in with an ADA coordinator contact. Is that something that's pertinent to this particular motion?
I'm sorry?
The ADA portion.
Yeah, it's a joint, uh, appointment. There are two separate appointments there, uh, but they are usually joined by one position, the building inspector.
Okay, so we're doing the building inspector and the ADA coordinator?
That's correct, sir.
That's correct. And the zoning officer.
Well, yeah, that's true. The ca, the position actually is building inspector and zoning officer, and he has a separate appointment as, uh, ADA coordinator, all expiring in May.
Outstanding.
We have a motion. Somebody made a motion. Did we make a-
Yeah, I made, made a motion.
Did you second it?
I would second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
I would, uh, I thank you very much for your, uh, recognition of the, uh, Mass Police Accreditations Committee, uh, award of our re-accreditation. We, uh, are very appreciative of your kind comments. Uh, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to concur with the proposal for BLW engineers for the Library HVAC study for $4,000 and to authorize the town administrator to execute the contract on behalf of the town. In your agenda package, you will see, uh, the results of the, uh, Library HVAC's, uh, Study Committee's review of the RFPs, I'm sorry, RFQs, and, uh, the unanimous recommendation to move forward. Uh, the copy of the agreement is in your agenda package, uh, and we recommend, uh, your, um, approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll, uh, make a motion to concur with the recommendation of the, uh, Library Committee and the town administrator, uh, to accept the proposal of BLW engineers for the Library HVAC's study in the amount of $4,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this, is this a good time to tie this in with the town hall to see if we can get some kind of a, uh, a deal on the two buildings instead of one?
Um, well, um, I will tell you, this is a good, good time to review the work of a consultant to see if we would entertain them, uh, expanding them once, uh, expanding this project once town meeting does its due diligence on June 5th. Uh, remember, we still have to vote that. The town has to still approve that, uh, recommendation. So, it would be a nice trial if, but I like the way you're thinking on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the revisions of the veteran service officer position as approved by the Personnel Committee. In your agenda package, you'll see that at the last meeting of the, um, Personnel Committee, they amended the, uh, job description for the Veteran Service Director, uh, basically just to, uh, make it compliant with all HIPAA requirements, um, to, uh, make the format similar to the other job descriptions of the town. And we had to change, uh, under education experience the actual certifications that are required for the positions and what the actual benefit structure is. It's very minor changes. It does not result in the change in the rating of the position, only in the duties that we will be evaluating their performance on.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
In your agenda package, you will find correspondence from the town administrator on the Green Communities Program. Uh, I will bring out the highlights of this, uh, memo to you. A couple of weeks ago, uh, Gene Bubon and I, uh, and I believe Kevin, our Economic Development Tourism Coordinator, had the pleasure of meeting with officials from the Mass Green Communities Program as well as our partners at CMR PC. And the subject of the meeting was to determine what interest the Town of Sturbridge has in becoming a green community. The town went through this process several years ago, and the town rejected the idea at that time. The major issue at that time was the adoption of the quote-unquote "stretch code." Um, I am told that nowadays, the current building code has been modified such a number of times, uh, since that effort was undertaken by the Town of Sturbridge, and the difference between the current code and the stretch code is not as great as it was a decade or so ago. The benefits of the town- The benefits of the town, uh, and I, I'm not gonna go through the entire, uh, presentation that you have in there, I've given to you a copy of the PowerPoint presentation in your agenda package, which basically details the qualifications and the, uh, and the reasons why a community might be interested in doing this. But I will point out to you slide, uh, or they're not numbered, on page four of the slides, it's Green Communities Designation and the Grant Program. Uh, essentially, what the town, the, the, the benefit to the town of Sturbridge would be, they are estimating that the town of Sturbridge will grant, would be granted a $140,000 state grant, uh, for the promotion of green energy, uh, promotion here in the town of Sturbridge. That could be replacing lights, uh, in our municipal buildings with LEDs, replacing old boilers or, or, or heating and air conditioning systems with more modern, um, you know, cost, uh, beneficial, uh, projects, uh, uh, equipment that would benefit the town. Uh, in your agenda package, you will see that CMRPC is willing to do most of the work to assist Sturbridge in meeting the criteria in its application. In your agenda package, you will see a draft MOU in which CMRPC details a $7,500 grant award to the town to assist in the application. I am bringing this forward for your consideration tonight. If you folks are so interested in continuing down this, uh, rabbit hole, uh, I am happy to work with CMRPC, with Gene Bubon, to, um, to submit the application, work with CMRPC, uh, to bring forward an application that will be considered, uh, uh, by the Board of Selectmen and by Town Meeting in the future. This does not commit the town to becoming a green community, it provides us resources to explore this and bring a recommendation to you folks for future consideration.
Mm-hmm. Do you need a motion for this?
Yeah, only if you folks are in agreement that we should at least continue to pursue.
Is there a motion either way?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue to pursue it.
Is there a second?
Based upon the new information that's been derived.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Yes.
Good.
Um, the, the one thing here that is, is, is coming up, and it's coming back to me too, as far as the, uh, the TIF programs and that, is that we're not taking into consideration everything that our residents have done as far as becoming a green community. I mean, if you look around, we've got a ton of solar on all of these houses around here, and they just, more permits and more permits and more permits, so...
Never mind the town's own green projects.
Right, right. So what I'm looking at is, you know, it, not only have we, we've gone the stretch with that, as well as our residents have certainly contributed their fair share to making it a green community, but as far as this tax and making financing plan, would that be something to look at as far as, uh, you know, sweetening the pot a little bit if they were to put up this 43,000 square foot building and put solar in there?
Well, um, like I said, the new provisions of the current building code don't take into consideration quite a bit of the formerly called stretch code requirements. If you go to page two, um, on the presentation, you'll see the, on the second slide on the bottom there, it's called Green Communities Designation and Grant Program. You will see what the designation criteria are as established by Mass, uh, Mass General Law. I'm not, I'm not gonna go through the whole list.
Right.
But I will tell you that items number one and number two, we are already meeting those.
Yep.
Uh, we already have as-of-right citing for, um, alternative energy, um, generation. You already have adopted those bylaws, thanks to the hard work of the Planning Board and Town Meeting. We've already adopted expediting permitting processing, 43D, you may have heard those terms used in the past. The creating an energy reduction plan to reduce energy by 20% in five years, I can pretty much guarantee you that we will meet that designation once our new solar projects come online, within, hopefully, the next couple of months. Purchasing only fuel-efficient vehicles, there is a process and a policy that the, uh, that the state would ask us to consider, basically for non-public safety-related vehicles, that in, when we have an opportunity, that we would buy energy-efficient vehicles as a first and foremost priority. And then the, the final thing is the adoption of the, uh, stretch code, which, as I said to you, appears to be a lot less controversial than it was, I think, ten or twelve years ago.
Right.
Those are the requirements the state says that we need to implement in order to be a green community.
And I agree, between what we've done as off-takers and everything else, we're certainly gonna meet that. But I would really be interested in the figure of how much energy has been generated in this town as a result of solar from private and public import.
Fair enough.
You know what I mean? We have certainly gotta be a green community. There is solar everywhere.
We got, we're a green community with lowercase g's and c's as opposed to the capital G's and C's.
Well, you know, you looked down at Route 15, we got it.
Oh, huh?
We've got some pretty big plants.
Oh, yeah, I'm with you.
Okay. Is there, um, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Thank you. I would ask for the Selectmen's concurrent on the appointment of Mary Plasse to serve as the part-time recording clerk for the Finance Committee effective May 16th at a rate of pay of 1541 per hour.
There a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Um, I would, I'm gonna, I...
I would skip that closer to the...
I, yeah, I'm gonna do that. I would ask for the, uh, Selectmen's concurrent on the appointment of Stephen Gagnon to serve as the Veteran Service Officer effective May 19th at a rate of pay of $5,150 per year. It is a stipend, uh, uh, position.
Motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Um, uh, I would like, in your, on your seats, ladies and gentlemen, I gave to you a recommendation dated May 15th, 2017, with regards to our custodian appointments. In the agenda package, I said that I am hoping that I would be in a position to hire a custodian or two this evening. Um, in my, um, uh, in my memo, I was hoping that the custodian positions, I was interviewing the final candidates today, um, and I was able to complete the corey background check on the recommended candidates for the position, and at this time, I would ask for your concurrence on two appointments. One is the gentleman, James Mortel. He has worked in, uh, cleaning crews for companies in the past, including Milton Bradley. He also has some basic maintenance experience, which may be helpful to the community as repairs need to be made within our municipal buildings. So it's a little bit more than just custodian with Mr. Mortel. And I'd like to recommend Sherri Lamica, who also has cleaning experience in various positions. She's currently working at the Extra Mart in Sturbridge. Uh, she is, demonstrated herself to be very attentive to detail and, uh, very excited about the opportunity to work for the town. They have been reviewed by the Facilities Coordinator, uh, and myself, and they have been recommended by Mr. Matt. If the Selectmen are so willing, I would ask the Selectmen to concur with the appointment of Ms. Lamica and Mr. Mortel as custodians for the town of Sturbridge effective May 19th, 2017, pending a successful pre-employment physical at a starting rate of 1571 per hour.
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
I thank you. Um, I would ask that we carry over the appointment of a Senior Center Program Assistant to your, either your meeting on June 5th, um, or, uh, or your following meeting on June 15th. Um, and I would like to go back to the item about reopening the warrant. I would ask the Board of Selectmen to vote to reopen the warrant at this time.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to reopen the warrant.
Is there a second?
Uh, please?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Um, you, you have to vote.
There's a motion to reopen and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Is it two? Michael, were you opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so it's two, two.
Three to, what is it?
Is it?
Three to one, right?
Are you opening or not?
Were you for it or against it?
I'm opening.
Yeah, oh, sorry, there's three, one. Three, one, I'm sorry.
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to amend your fiscal 18 budget by decreasing the Burgess School budget by $100,000 as requested by the School Department.
That doesn't sound reasonable.
It's reasonable.
It's 10 of 9.
What article is that one, Leon? That's in the main?
Article number 10. And the reason being is that, um, uh, you know, of course, when the budget requests are made, we, uh, including all departments, including the schools, have to make certain expectations relative to staffing, relative to, uh, alternative educational requirements for some of, uh, special needs students, and they would have been able to find within their operating budget and with the students that are coming back, that the Burgess School budget can be reduced by the tune of $100,000, um, uh, because the need will not be as needed in those categories.
What was that figure again?
$100,000. So it'll be the school budget minus $100,000. I will tell you that the Finance Committee has already made this vote, um, and the town administrator's budget that will appear in the warrant book that is printed by the Finance Committee is going to reflect the lower amount for both the Finance Committee and the town administrator, and it would look awkward if the Board of Selectmen's number was higher when it didn't need to be.
Okay.
One question. Does this have anything to do with the, uh, the new school system?
It doesn't, I don't believe so at all.
I don't think so.
I don't believe so.
So the, the count and everything is still where it's supposed to be as far as the Burgess School goes?
Yeah. Yes, I think what they found is that they, they had planned for a cer- to take care of certain types of educational requirements that due to the change of our census, we no longer have to deal with in the operating budget.
Okay, 'cause I know we're gonna lose some transportation money over that as well.
We may.
With the new school.
We've anticipated that number to be in the ballpark of about $6,000.
$6,000?
But you may recall, the last time when we amended, when we brought forward the budget, Barbara and I brought forward a request to increase that budget by $6,000.
Okay.
So in essence, we're, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, $6,000, I think, $400. So in the, at the end of the game, we're, we're going to be, uh, reducing the budget by $96,000, $94,000, in change.
We're good.
Um, is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the budget, um, as stated by our town administrator.
Is there a second?
There is.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote is four to nothing.
I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the, um, uh, School Committee and the School Administration for their due diligence, due diligence in this effort. They knew that this had been a very particularly difficult budget year, and, um, I thank them for all their work on behalf of the town of Sturbridge. Uh, last, um, the agenda, I do want to tell you that there had, I'm sure that you have seen my correspondence, uh, which I didn't bring with me, by the way, um, with regards to, no, um...
Is this here?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, we, thank you very much. Uh, with regards to, um, the recent update that I sent this morning about the Doughty Road purchase, and I wanna make sure that everybody is on the same page. Uh, this morning, I was contacted by Ed Goodwin regarding the Doughty Road purchase. As you know, he is a member of the Conservation Commission, but also a member of the, uh, Community Preservation Committee. Uh, there was a lot of discussion over the last several days, um, probably less than a week and a half, uh, about whether or not the Doughty Road purchase that the Board of Selectmen considered at their right of first refusal hearing, um, uh, several weeks ago, could be used for active recreation purposes, i.e., uh, field space. Um, a modified motion, at the, at the time we discussed this, and I gave you folks some updates, it was unclear, uh, whether or not the state would be able to or be willing to provide you folks with, uh, provide the town, I should say, with the, um, grant opportunity that was presented to the Board of Selectmen when you initially cast your vote in support of exercising your right of first refusals. Uh, in the last forty-eight hours, apparently, we have determined that the State Granting Authority would still favorably consider a grant application where a portion is designated for active recreation. We have sent a modified, um, motion, um, and article to the state which incorporated some active recreation, which was found to be acceptable by the Granting Authority. Uh, they did say that the article would need to be amended accordingly as well, which I also anticipated that the moderator would probably insist upon, uh, if that was to happen. This morning, I went out to the property with Mr. Colburn of our Conservation Department and Mr. Col- uh, Mr. Goodwin to view the site. I sent you all a copy of a photo that I took detailing the field space, which clearly looks like it would be a much better and less expensive area to develop for fields than the Plimpton property, or certainly the area behind the DPW building, which would require, as we estimated, uh, over a million dollars in order to blast ledge. Uh, I sent you photos of the, um, of the, um, uh, the pictures, um, that I took while I was on the, uh, property. Mr. Goodwin had, uh, asked if he could, uh, come to the meeting tonight and ask that the Board reopen the warrant to modify the article to allow for, uh, active recreation on this site. I've since heard from the, um, interim Recreation Director, um, Ms. Rossioli, who feels that this is an op- uh, opportunity worth, definitely worth exploring, um, and because, and only because that the, um, that I feel confident that our chances for the grant would not be jeopardized, I felt it was imperative that we at least have this opportunity to discuss this tonight.
Which article I, which warrant item is it numbered, do you know?
This is Article 7.
Seven, okay.
So if you pull, if, I don't know if you all have your mo- your articles in front of you. You will see that in Article 7, it is written in such a way that it speaks to conserve the, with that, and this was what was presented to the Board, uh, at the time the article was, uh, was considered, uh, in that right of first refusal hearing. The Board of Selectmen essentially voted to protect this land, uh, or at least to exercise its right of first refusal for, um, conservation and passive recreation purposes. Uh, the, uh, discussion, uh, and I don't wanna steal any of your thunder, Ed, if I've already done so, I apologize, uh, but, uh, the discussion here tonight would be whether or not the Board of Selectmen would consider adding the words, uh, and/or passive recreation, uh, and to designate in the motion, uh, a portion of about 16 acres, as we did with the Plimpton property, uh, for, uh, what we would deem to be active recreational purposes. I will defer to anyone smarter or no more knowledgeable than I about this project. Like I said, this has been a very fluid situation over the last, say, seven or nine days, um, and I know that you folks have a very, um, awesome responsibility here before you today. I will defer to if there's any questions from the Board or others.
Uh, we have, Ms., who is speaking on behalf of, I think you said, Mr. Goodwin, is speaking on this behalf?
He was the one who approached me about it, so...
Okay, so is there a spokesperson for this?
Can I just ask a question?
Wait, yeah, hang on a second. Is there a spokesperson? 'Cause this isn't a public hearing. It's not a public hearing, so whoever requested this would like to hear from them.
I was the one who called the other morning.
Mary. Well, if you wanted him to present first, maybe he'll answer my question.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you, Chris.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's just adding the word "active recreation" and setting aside 16 acres in the center field for possible use of recreation, active recreation. That, it doesn't change anything else. There really isn't anything to tell you. We have had this issue, as Mary can tell you, in supporting Parks and Recs back through, and when we started this process, we wanted Parks and Recs to be on it, and we were told that we were not qualified for the grant if we, if we put active recreation on. And Glenn did the research and got to the state, and the state sent us a letter and has confirmed that we will not be impacted on the grant if we put, if we set aside the 16 acres. So all we're asking for is a spot for Parks and Rec to put a ball field if they feel like it, I mean, you know, at some point in the future.
Let me ask you a question before we, before we can, I consider this, I want to have, I have a question. Is that land, is there anything on that land, I don't know if I should ask, I'm asking you, but maybe Glenn can answer as well. Is there anything on that land that could prohibit fields from being built? Are there any endangered species that are gonna surface so that if we buy this land, okay, let's say we buy this land, and then we go to put fields there, and we say, "Oops, guess what, we can't do that"?
No.
You know, there's nothing...
Nothing that's going to prohibit us from putting fields.
So there's nothing, that's...
Other than the town voting to do so. I mean, yeah.
Good, okay.
It's, no, it's field, it's upland. The spot that we're talking about setting aside is a clean, beautiful field.
Okay.
And as Leon had said, and I'm not an engineer, but it looks clearly more developable than the other sites that we've looked at.
Agreed.
But all we're asking is to put "active" in it. We're not, and we'll go to vote and find out what people in the town want to do.
Okay.
And the one question I have, does the "active recreation" bring into consideration hunting at all?
No, that's what, the hunting is with you. It's with the Board of Selectmen, as far as we're concerned, within each of our sites. That isn't something that's considered in putting "active" in. Nope.
Because I've had several people come to me and say that that has been thrown in the mix, that they wanted to get it for a, another preserve, shall we say, to go hunting in the fall or whatever.
Okay.
And I don't know that that's what we want to combine with a ball field.
Right. Selectmen Allen?
I just want to add to, Craig, it's my understanding from the past, though, that passive recreation, those catchwords, do include hunting unless we specifically state that they can't hunt. So adding the words "active recreation" doesn't add hunting. Hunting is already considered passive recreation in that world of the CPC, which, so, if we don't want to allow hunting, then we need to take other action, because passive recreation is going to include hunting.
So we can't do passive recreation with the exclusion of hunting?
I guess we could specifically exclude hunting, because if we don't, the term is broad enough to include hunting. We already know that from the Shepherd ourselves.
In other words, to me, it looks like that the ball field thing is something that is, you know, on the outside, it looks like it's viable. It looks like it's gonna be a lot less money than spending millions to blast rock and all of that, and, you know, it is on the top of a hill, it's a nice site, and it looks like that could work. But as far as the rest of it goes, I don't want to mix the guns and the kids. That's not...
Do you mind your conservation restrictions?
Yeah, okay. Mr. Goodwin will speak to this.
No, this is not, we're not deciding that here. Obviously, if we're going, if we put ball fields in there, we're not gonna have hunting, and the Selectmen have the power to say, "No hunting." And that's not today, that's tomorrow, that's next year, that's the year after, just to say, "There'll be no hunting, we're posting this property."
At least it's addressed anyways.
Yeah, so that's, so it's really not...
You don't know what's gonna happen at the town meeting. Somebody may walk up with a substitute motion and change the whole thing, so it's, you gotta be ready for that, Ed.
Yeah, I mean, that's possible.
Anything can happen. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
A question, okay.
I know, Leon, you reached out to the coordinator, to Ms. Rossioli. Did the Recreation Committee vote on this?
I can't speak to the, if the Recreation Committee...
Got a member here.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, it's not a public hearing.
I believe he's a member of the CPC.
Cadian Phillips is a member of CPC and voted for active recreation for this land.
Right, he's a member of...
As a CPC member. I don't, and he, so he came, you know, I don't know what they was said. It's been happening quickly. To tell you honestly, we didn't find out that we were going to be able to allow "active" until, you know, just recently.
I mean, I'm obviously, I've been a big proponent for more active recreation, but I have a certain level of frustration because we added it to Riverlands, and, you know, we talked about, I guess, tennis courts at the time, and Riverlands is not conducive to active recreation.
Well, I'd love to...
We're behind the DPW, and now there's a million dollars of ledge, and that's what the town offered, recreation in the past, and then now we have the Plimpton property, which is not conducive. Shepherd was, but the language was wrong. So I just want to make sure we're not just adding language to see it pass, that we really are interested in that, and I, so I agree with our chair this evening's comment, that we're really interested in putting recreational fields there.
If it's viable.
If it's viable, because we've added the language in the past and nothing's happened. You know, Riverlands is not gonna have active recreation, yet we put that language in. So I don't want to see language added and get certain members of the community excited and on board only to see that it's really not gonna happen. So I guess that's why I wanted somebody from Recreation Committee here to say, "Yes, this is something we want to pursue."
Cadian was gonna be here, but he had two...
He's here.
What? Oh, Cadian. Come on up here.
Yeah, that goes through the chair.
Speaking of somebody in the audience.
Yeah, you need to go through the chair, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little dirty.
Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Goodwin, you need to go through the chair for that, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Please identify yourself.
Cadian Phillips, 153-seater, member of Recreation Committee and Conservation Preservation Committee. We did not get a chance to vote in this particular parcel, because it's happened so quickly. Everything's just been changing, so we have a meeting scheduled sometime this week. We're supposed to have it tomorrow, but it didn't get posted, so hopefully...
We can't wait that long. See, we're in a, the sad part, we're in a crunch.
I understand that.
Have you talked to your members at all?
Yes, yes. So members that I've spoken to are definitely in favor of...
How much of, how many members do you have, and how many are in favor?
Only, I have only spoken to, spoken to one person.
Okay.
And then the old Recreation, our current town clerk, who's, you know, still an advisor to the committee, is that, was also, you know, making sure somebody would be here for this meeting to discuss it. The reason why we want this language in is what happened at Stallion Hill, where we got to that point where we're ready to move on the parcel, realizing that the intentions that were set in writing just didn't allow us to do that. So we want to make sure that any parcel that the town gets, if we decide we're gonna go for, to put any ball fields or whatever project we have, we can, we can go quickly on that. With the town barn project, you know, it took, I've been a part of the Recreation Committee for about four years, and that plan has been in the works since then. So it was disappointing when it got, it got shot down, or, you know, failed slightly at town meeting, but, so we haven't brought anything forward, because we're rethinking, what's the best, what's the best motion we can bring forward to the town that would gain that support? So if we're going to go to Plimpton property, that's gonna require, again, engineered diagrams and making sure we find a parcel that will work well. Based on what Mr. Goodwin has told me, it seems like the parcel that's set aside for recreation would be a pretty simple project to get done. The area is already flat, relatively sandy, not too much ledge to blast, so if that's the case, that's probably will be our project moving.
Yeah, see, this is, this is the concern tonight, and I think Selectman Allen echoed it as well. The concern is, is that, I think we're all in favor, and I know the community's in favor of these fields. It's not the issue. It's always been the price tag, as opposed to having it been phased in, and say, Phase 1, Phase 2, and like, have a long-term project of, I'm saying three years. I'm not saying 20-year project.
Right.
And phase it in, and I think you'd have far greater success. But my concern is, is can we really get to these fields? Can we really, if Recreation comes up with a nice plan?
Right.
For, let's say, the fall town meeting, okay, or whatever, and says, "You know what? This is what we can do." Is that land viable? That's the biggest concern, because to pay for this land, and then we can't even use it?
Right.
The town would have, would be in an uproar, and understandably so.
I understand, yeah.
And I know you do. I know, and I know you want, and we want to help you get what you want?
Right.
And need. Now, it's not a want, it's more of a need.
Right. And a big point that would be the price. The price has always been our downfall, right, is that we, if we bring a $6 million project, if we're able to get that down to $3, $4 million, it'll be a lot more palatable to the residents of the town.
Right. If you can phase something in, like, if you could phase something in, even if your tag came up to six ultimately, if you could phase it in so that the community doesn't see it as an overwhelming number, you'll have far greater success.
Agree, agree.
Yeah. Any, Selectman Allen?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, we can, we can continue the discussion.
I got some questions.
Go ahead.
My, my question is a legal question. Under, the purpose of Chapter 61 Programs is to help keep land undeveloped, and from, I got this from the state website, and it says, "After exercising the first refusal option, the land," and if the town did that, "the land must then be acquired by the municipality within 90 days unless an extension is agreed upon by the landowner. The municipality may then exercise its first refusal option to buy the land or transfer the first refusal option to an eligible conservation organization, state conservation agency, or land trust, who must then also acquire the land within 90 days." In other words, the whole intent of the first option is to keep the land out of development. If we develop the property with ball fields, I don't know if we can do that under 61A option.
Leon, do you know?
I disagree with your interpretation. I think that...
It says it right here, it has to be conservation if we exercise the option.
What it says is that the town has the right to a first refusal under Chapter 61 to purchase the property.
And then develop it?
They also have the ability, if they choose to, to designate a conservation entity, such as like the Opakam Land Trust, to exercise their right of first refusal for them. But it doesn't, it stops short of saying that this property would remain as conservation land and only as conservation land. It doesn't say that.
It says that the intent is, is to, so that the land doesn't get developed. That's what it says.
What is the, what is the sentence that says the intent?
Says, "The purpose of Chapter 61 Programs is to help keep land undeveloped." That's the whole reason that...
There's no question about that, but when it comes out of 61...
Well, is that considered a development of having some fields?
Yeah.
We could...
No, I, that's what you need a legal, now you're giving the legal opinion. I mean...
If it comes out of 61, it goes fade, and it's done, you can do what you want with it.
We could build a, if we didn't pay for it with community preservation funds, we could build anything we wanted up there as a town.
But community preservation funds can most definitely build active recreation.
It doesn't matter what funds we buy it with, it's if we exercise the option under 61A, can we develop ball fields there?
I think that not only is the answer, yes, I think numerous occasions in the state that that is the answer. That is correct.
Can you get us examples of that?
Absolutely, Kevin.
Okay, is there, is there a motion on this item?
I'm gonna make a motion that we...
Excuse me?
I have something to say. If you don't recognize it, I will sue this entire board and the town for triple damages. Last time, you cut my son off, when you let Ed Goodwin get up there in front of that microphone after the meeting was canned, was called off.
I'd like to open the meeting line.
And we have three witnesses at least, myself, him, and my son.
And I represent Evergadner, the property owner. And several inconsistencies on legal issues have gone on over the past several months here. And I'd like to speak also.
May I ask a question?
Leon, what do we do with this?
This is aware of, for the developer.
Leon, what do we do with this?
Put her down. You're gonna be in big trouble. This whole town will pay a big price.
What do we do with this?
There was a, through you, Madam Chair, there was a, there was a public hearing that was opened, and it was closed, and the Board of Selectmen voted to exercise their right of first refusal.
But it was closed, and Ed Goodwin got up and talked after it was closed. You allowed him to do that, and you, my son wanted to regret what he was saying, and you didn't allow him. So that is a problem.
That's right.
Not forgetting it.
I'll second that.
The open meeting law allows for the Chair, the Board of Selectmen, or any board or committee to recognize individuals from the audience to speak or not speak. Tonight, for example...
After you said, told my son that he couldn't speak, that...
I'm not the one that did that.
Who told that to him?
I'm not, I was not chair that night. I'm not the one who said that to him. This is a different...
But we have witnesses that...
I'm not arguing the point. I'm not arguing the point.
The attorney for the developer would like to speak, please.
You must, you must ask the Chair, the Board of Selectmen, to be recognized.
Yeah.
Do you need to? No. You can, or you may not.
Can we?
And, what?
Yeah.
In all fairness, I think both sides should be able to state their, their case. I mean, we have to make a decision, and I'd like to hear what, what Mr. Goodwin, and anybody else in favor or opposed to it would have to say, as long as, within time constraints.
Just give us a minute, please.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I don't have any problem letting people speak, but I do want to say that this is not another public hearing.
That's my point.
This is, hold on.
Just a minute, please.
Hold on. This is a reopening of our warrant, because we actually already voted to place the article in the warrant, and now we're reopening the warrant to consider adding language on active recreation. So I don't have a problem listening to anybody speak. As an individual Selectman, though, I don't appreciate anybody, you know, coming up with any kind of, "You're all in trouble, and I'm gonna sue all of you." We're all here, we're all here doing the best job that we can, and tonight was not a public hearing. So, but I personally, if want to speak to active recreation or not, I'm more than willing to listen to anybody at this point.
But, except you have to understand that what she just said is accurate. We're not gonna allow five, six, seven, eight people to speak. This is not a public hearing. Okay? This is not a public hearing. The public hearing was held. This is a request to reopen the warrant, and that's what we did. We reopened the warrant for two items. The ultimate decision is gonna come from the town. It's not gonna come from us.
I agree completely. All I'm asking is, I don't, I'm a lawyer, I don't represent anybody but myself and my issues. Shouldn't be using a microphone, Madam Chair. And I, I'm only gonna sit at the table when the Chair says they can't, but I respectfully request that you ask a member, a member of the town, a citizen, to speak, even though he doesn't speak, not to have the Recreation Committee, and a member from...
Okay, you got a valid point. Okay, one person, one person then. Like I said, I'm not opening this up as a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please take the microphone and identify yourself.
Should probably let the attorney speak, too.
It's a public where he is.
No, no, he's not, the attorney for the developer is here. He is not representing anybody, so, just telling you.
Okay.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, and I would like an opportunity to speak.
Are you the attorney?
Yes, I am. There's only one person.
Then I'll have you, then why don't you come forward, please? That's good.
And so what's that mean?
That means she speaks.
Not me?
After you.
Even though it was approved?
Fine, you can approve, quick, a quick, quick, no, stay, stay. Quick, though, statement, if you have, and then the attorney will speak.
Oh, sure. My concern is that...
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Ed Neal, Three Old Village Road in Sturbridge. My concern is that, to best of my knowledge, CPC hasn't voted on this. I know that when Mr. Gomo referred to it as being a fluid situation, it became fluid only after the Finance Committee did not allow, did not endorse the article, and I don't know whether or not this has come from the CPC on a public, or in a, an open meeting. I don't know, we already know that the Recreation Committee, which would basically have the oversight of this property, has seen it at all. I know that we're spending of CPC money, $190,000, on doing some of the playground, and I have great concern that we're rushing into this like you can't believe. I know of two prior instances where the CPC has gotten involved in two pieces of property for rec. One of the properties was passive. It was not, as I recall, approved for active, and there was another piece of property that I understand that they spent, I think I saw $70,000 for a study for a property that was deemed, or their property, that was deemed unusual, or unusable. And so, I'm gonna keep it short.
Yes, please.
My concern is that we're rushing into this too fast. We don't know where that acreage is. We apparently had an assessment of wetlands in the last 48 hours. I respectfully suggest that if the Commonwealth did look at this, they probably did it within the last 48 hours, to try to touch the bases, and it just, no marriage works like that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, now I'll have the attorney, please.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
Karen Davis. So I will only speak to changing the article. I believe that this is somewhat disingenuous for a couple of reasons. I think we have an obligation to the voters to put an honest and accurate article in front of them. It's become clear that we have all decided in this committee has decided that the voters are gonna make this decision. So if they're going to make this decision, they need to know exactly what they're deciding to. Couple of reasons why I think this request is not what it appears to be. I think that from the beginning, we have worked with everybody in this committee to try to meet everybody's needs that has an interest in this land. We have met with the committees on multiple times. The only committee that consistently has not bent has been the CPC Committee. Every time we have met, they have told us this is the crown jewel of their open space... Every time we have met, they have told us this is the crown jewel of their open space plan, that they want the wildlife to cross and recross around this, that under no conditions would they consider anything but open space. Now, a week after the Finance Committee will not approve this article, all of the sudden active recreation is something that is important to this committee. So I find this very disingenuous. I also think that, I'm all for ball fields, but there's been no time put into whether this is even a realistic location. The field, it looks very nice and it looks like it will work. What about the 50 or 60 cars that are gonna drive up and down Doughty Road when they're, they're changing games? We're not talking about household members leaving randomly, but a whole chunk of people that are gonna be driving on that road. The Recreation Committee has not considered this. So again, I agree with Ed Neal, they're jumping into this. I think you have an obligation to the townspeople to put in front of them what is realistic, and also, out of fairness to the townspeople, what will become of this property. We have the Plimpton property, we've been down this road numerous times, the townspeople have been down this road numerous times, where there have been promises made that we're gonna be looking into this recreation, which everybody does want, and then nothing ever comes of it. And I think this land is being thrown right into that bucket with that, and I do believe that there is an obligation to the townspeople to tell them accurately what they're going to vote on, on the 5th.
Thank you. Okay. The item, the item before the committee tonight is the, we have opened the warrant, we have been asked to add active recreation. Is there a motion either way on this article, and then we can do discussion among the board?
I'm gonna make a motion, and then I wanna discuss it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we modify Article 7 to include active recreation within the language of the community preservation, open space acquisition, acquisition borrowing.
Is there, is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails.
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to close the warrant.
Is there a motion to close the warrant?
Motion to close the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on closing the warrant? All those in favor? Warrant is closed four to nothing. Thank you.
Madam Chair, on your agenda, we are now up to correspondence.
Do we have a sheet?
I never got one.
I never got one either. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
For sharing documents.
Yeah.
Notification to a butters under the Mass Wetland Protection Act, Town of Sturbridge Wetland Bylaw Regulations, April 20. KP Law Update, April 26. Notification to a butters under the Mass Wetland Protection Act, Town of Sturbridge Wetland Bylaw Regulations, Notice of Intent, April 26. Charter Communications, April 26. Tri Valley Inc. Crisis Intervention Program Update, May 1. United States Bankruptcy Court, Eastern District of Missouri.
Thank you. Approval of minutes?
In your agenda package, you will see minutes from April 27 at 6:30.
Does the board have a chance to look at them?
It's pretty much the-
It's the budget, right.
It's the warrant.
The budget and the warrant.
And the warrant, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen dated 4/27/2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Four to zero.
Old business? Is there any old business? Mr. Moran, old business?
Think it'd be appropriate to open the warrant again?
Are you serious?
I'm serious.
Do you have something you wanna?
I'd go for the active recreation.
What are you doing?
Active recreation.
You're making a motion? I'm sorry, I missed it, are you, what are we doing?
He's asking if we can be open-
I'm saying, would it be appropriate to open the warrant again?
Are you making a motion to open it?
I asked a question, if it would be appropriate.
I think, I, I don't think it's inappropriate-
Okay.
-but I think it would fall hard on the people who are here trying to, to be active for it, and that's my only thing. We could do, you could do a substitute motion if you wanted to.
At the town meeting?
Yeah. It might be better served that. I mean, you do what you want, but-
No, no, I'm just, you know? Sometimes it's easier to deal with people when they're down the road.
Yeah, I agree.
We can have a much better conversation than we had beforehand with all the emotions.
Well, do we have another opportunity to open the mo, open the warrant?
No, we're done.
This is it, so.
Well, let me, let me, let me say this, I-
You'd have to make a motion to reconsider.
Wait, wait, Mary, wait.
I need to post this warrant by Wednesday.
You don't have another chance?
I'm planning on posting it in the next 48 hours.
You don't have a chance.
So you can either do it, or you can do it at town meeting with a substitute motion, whatever you wish.
So we'd have to come in and sign the warrant?
Oh, yeah, I'll have them all prepared. Before Wednesday? I have to wait till tonight. I have, I'll have them all prepared. I would ask sometime in the next, give me till tomorrow to try to finalize the final draft of the warrant, so that it's properly ready for your execution, and then I would, actually, I don't mind if you sign the document tonight, I mean, it, it's relatively all set, and there's a signature page, I don't mind you folks signing the signature page tonight.
Yeah, no any changes, the, the amount of the school budget?
That I've already, I've taken care of in advance, thinking that you folks would already do that. I couldn't envision a scenario where you wouldn't do that.
So let's go back to Craig. Craig, do you wanna do anything, or?
I guess my thing is, under old business, I'd like to bring up the Doughty Road property for a minute, if I would.
Okay.
And what I'd like to say is that, you know, I, I can see conservatively, looking at the land that's up there, and being up there and walking it, is the fact that I don't think it's gonna take a lot of money to be able to build a high-quality ball field in that area. Whether or not, you know, it's, it's, we're gonna be able to utilize the rest of the property, I'm not that familiar with this 61A thing, or whether we can let all the land on the south side of the, south side of this operation where it's, you know, built for a mountain goat, would be something that we wouldn't be interested in, but we probably have to buy the whole parcel if that was being offered. So I'm, I'm just kinda between a rock and a hard place as to whether, you know, we're trying to do the right thing by the townspeople, let it make them the decision, but do we wanna bring in this active recreation thing at the same time? I know it's gonna make it easier for some people who want the ball fields, and, and that has been, you know, a crown jewel for a long time of getting kids more ball fields.
Maybe, maybe in light with what you're suggesting, if we get the word out to the Recreation Committee to have them make a presentation that night as to why they would like it included through a substitute motion-
Right.
-why they would like to see the substitute motion, why they would like to have it included.
Right.
Might be, because it gives them time to put something together, not a plan, because it's not enough time, but, you know, is it feasible, is it not feasible? Because like he said, he hadn't talked to all his members anyway, so.
I was just curious why we would have to make this determination tonight, if the land were purchased, why we couldn't put those restrictions on it once it's purchased.
No.
Go ahead, Mary.
Go ahead.
We're gonna run into difficulty if we don't put the actual language. The Shepherd Parcel, I disagree a little bit with the presentation on that. The wording of that read, "Open space and conservation." So, our attorneys determined that there's any ambiguity there. Under the CPA, open space is broad enough to include active recreation, conservation does not, and the words were used together. So we sought a language clarification of the deed, and by, I don't know, three, a handful of votes, don't quote me on the amount, but a handful of votes, we voted down clarifying it, so it stayed at conservation. So, henceforth, we've always added the words, "Active recreation." Otherwise, we could see ourselves in a position where we buy it, and then recreation moves forward with the design, and then there's a concerned resident that says, "That's not what the language says." So, personally, you know, with all due respect of what was presented tonight, it's still left up to the, we're not doing any harm by adding that language, it's left up to the townspeople. There may be some townspeople that say, "You know what? I don't want the traffic for ball fields," or whatever, but we're making it broad enough to serve a lot of interests.
Right.
So I see that as a win.
Right.
You know, we're making it broader rather than more confining.
Right.
So I hope someone does come up with a substitute motion.
I guess the question is, does the board see the benefit of, of opening up the warrant and adding that active recreation to the article before it's closed?
Personal?
And then letting the townspeople make the decision.
Well, that's why I made the motion.
Let it make it easier on them.
See, personally, I don't, I think, for me, I won't support that, I support your idea.
Yeah.
But the people who were here, it's like a slap in the face, it's like, as soon as you left, we decided to do it anyway. I, I get where you're coming from, though, 'cause this is a nice conversation.
I hadn't, I hadn't made up my mind, and there was people screaming, and flags being made, everything else, I don't need that.
I totally agree.
I'm not here for that.
Totally agree.
I'd rather make a sane decision after all the rant and raving is gone.
That's why I didn't allow the speaking to happen.
And that was good, good move.
If they, if they really want it, they can prepare a plan, 'cause that's what we had at, for Plimpton, this is where the recreation will go, so everybody can know what they're voting on, and, and they can do it as a substitute motion at, at town meeting.
I think all they would have to do is take the same motion and just add-
Just add the wording, and, but I, I would say that if they want it passed, they're gonna have to draw up a plan, and this is where-
Gonna have to show why it works.
Leon, do you have any input? Show where the active recreation's gonna go.
Well, I mean, Leon did, I mean, you, you don't have to have a full plan, he showed the 16 acres that we would include, correct, Leon?
The plan that you have, that I emailed to folks today, was, was drafted literally today-
Right.
-by, by Glenn. It's because, I mean, unlike the Plimpton property, which was heavily wooded, the topography was all over the place.
It's a hayfield.
These are simple fields that was quite easy to designate where a field might be and where a field has no business being, and, and, you know, when you visited it personally, it made sense to me how that would make sense.
I mean, could not the Board of Selectmen, perhaps if the Recreation Committee wanted to join in, in the substitute motion, but we are also free to offer a substitute motion, are we not? We're not confined by this evening. Well, I'm not saying we're gonna take a vote tonight, but let's say I made a motion to-
As an individual, you could.
Well, I know that, but it carries a little more clout if it's the whole board.
I would be amicable to opening the warrant again and taking the vote and just see where it goes, if you so, so desire.
Well, what I'm saying is, a motion to offer a substitute motion on, because it's gonna be a two-two vote, it's not gonna, I mean, I already made the motion, you weren't in a position then to second it, I respect that, but we already, it's going to be a two-two, because I don't wanna, but they also didn't second my motion. But I don't know if, if everybody can go home and think about whether or not they would support a substitute motion at town meeting to add that language.
Well, naturally, if I'd support the motion, I'd certainly support a substitute.
Okay, I, I would as well, so. Perhaps, we can even do that with a full board, couldn't we? We're not, we're not confined tonight on substitute motions, correct?
You're correct, you're correct.
Okay.
The only practical thing that I would say is that your next meeting of the board is on June 5th, at, what is it, what time do you guys meet, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, yeah.
Prior to town meeting.
Right.
So, ponder this carefully, because you may decide to call the Chairman of the Board and ask for a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen sometime between today and town meeting to have that discussion. You see what I mean?
Right.
I see.
Otherwise, you're gonna be having to wait till the night of town meeting.
I see.
That's all. To have it coming from the board.
Right.
Ms. Jimis was correct in pointing out that you don't need the full board to offer a substitute motion, any individual could offer a substitute motion. It doesn't even have to be a member of the Board of Selectmen. Perhaps after tonight's discussion, and the people who are watching at home, there might be some folks that would agree that a substitute motion be developed. It does not have to be representative of the majority of the Board of Selectmen or even offered by the Board of Selectmen.
My intentions were just to give the townspeople the benefit of the doubt of having all the facts on the table and being able to have the tools to work with if they decide to vote for it one way or the other.
Yeah. The-
Mike?
Yeah, I, you know, the, the article as written only has purchase of the property. If the town acquires the land, there is some, some other liabilities that we would have to address, like demolition of the existing structures that are on, which include a lodge house with asbestos siding and all that, so I, we don't have any idea how much that will cost as well. So I, I got, you know, it's, it's just, we're, we're kinda rushed into this, we have no idea what the costs are.
My understanding from the town moderator, who I met this evening on my way in here, is I guess the, I don't wanna, those who wanna keep it for development have, I guess, quite a presentation that they're trying to make, or gonna try to make. So that's why I'm saying, if it's a substitute motion, it needs to be defended somehow with something.
Yeah.
You know, and, and not show, I know it's a last-minute effort, and you're right, you know, you're right, and not show that it's last-minute, sorta show some-
Show some-
Some substance to the future for this.
Yeah, so I, you know, if, if we, if the town administrator and boards, I, you know, wanna make a presentation, you know, on a substitute motion, it's, I would, you know, support them doing that, so that, I want the voters to decide.
Let me ask this question.
Have all the information they need to decide one way or another.
Does the board want another, a special meeting? I, I have to go by the Chair, 'cause, I mean, let the Chair decide, but, do you wanna request from the Chair a special meeting before June 5th, and not wait till the night of June 5th? Or do you wanna just leave it go to June 5th? Your choice, I mean, you can, whatever you think.
I think it-
Go ahead.
I think it's worthwhile to have a meeting where we, we're able to discuss this with a full board, I would, I would be-
A one-item agenda.
A one-item agenda, and I would be amenable to attend. If the Recreation Committee could be, let's assume that we're all in favor of having this meeting, if the Recreation Committee, Leon, could be contacted and indicate that it would be helpful to have their vote on it.
But not their presence?
They don't have to be present, but I mean-
If you do this, if you do-
They don't have, no, I'm not a joint, not a joint meeting, not a joint meeting, but if they, if they are inclined to take this matter up at their next meeting, I would like to know, you know-
Their vote.
Their vote, because they're an elected board. Certainly, you know, this member, I have a lot of respect for him, and, and, you know, he's excited about it, I'm excited about it, I know you spoke with Ms. Rossioli, so I don't know if they're also meeting from now until then.
Wednesday, he said they were meeting Wednesday night, I believe.
So, I mean, I would like to have their vote in hand, I would like them to discuss whether or not, what we did, what we discussed tonight, would they be in favor of pursuing fields on this hayfield, which it does sound like they don't have the obstacles of ledge and everything else.
Trying to be respectful.
But I don't wanna go around them either.
But trying to be respectful of your time and the process, I could absolutely do as you suggest, to the Recreation Committee, let them know that the Board of Selectmen may be interested, if not as a board, but certainly as individuals, in, in, in supporting a secondary or alternative motion for, substitute motion for the Doughty Road purchase, and there's nothing that says that they couldn't be the sponsors of this and that the members of the Board of Selectmen could weigh in, in their support for, for a-
That's true. I would be amenable to that as well.
This is true.
And I wouldn't say supporting the Doughty Road purchase would be the proper terminology, because all we're trying to do is, is our original meeting is we placed it only, we didn't support. It's to bring all of the facts before the voters, as many as we can, and let the voters make the decision, not that we're supporting it, not supporting it, whatever the situation is. And that's why I said, if it's just gonna be the words, "Active recreation," put on there, let's open the warrant now, put the active recreation on, close the warrant, and it's a done deal, we can all go home. We don't have to worry about extra meetings. We don't have to worry about, you know, special meetings before or after the meeting, because we're really not going to do anything except put that on that piece of land. And if it goes for the town, and the town decides they want it, they've got that tool that they can work with in their toolbox. It's not passive. It's active-passive. So that's all I'm trying to do, is give them the tools. Because at the end of the day, we've only placed the article, and it's going to be up to the townspeople. Because there's going to be a lot of people that are fighting this thing, too.
Oh, big time.
So, you know, to give the townspeople the tools that they need to be able to do the job, I can't see where we're doing any harm by that. But that's just my particular take on it. We could have that one meeting take up the whole night, by the way things are looking with this crowd.
Well, yeah, see, that's the thing. That's the problem with having it, because you can't... If we do have a public meeting, which it would be...
Right.
And you do have people who come, you don't have to acknowledge them, because it's not a public hearing.
Right.
So then you're back to square one. We're back to having this again, if not in a bigger capacity.
Yeah, but all we're doing is opening up the warrant like we were doing originally.
Right.
But... Or suggest to Recreation that they come up with a substitute motion.
And I get that. The only thing is, is it's going to money the water at the meeting, and the meeting is just going to go on. Just an idea, it's, you know, it's not a big thing. I'm just trying to...
Is there a motion?
Well, I made a motion that wasn't seconded. So doesn't it have to be somebody in the majority on this? That's how we've always done it in no fit.
You're talking about for reconsideration.
Well, yeah, because my motion was not seconded.
He needs to reopen it. Okay, this is in the discussion. You should ask.
I would say... I would say that a motion was probably in order, because you're not necessarily taking... Not necessarily taking the same action. But it's a diff... I mean, you put your...
We're reopening the warrant.
Correct.
And that was my motion, to reopen the warrant.
No, your motion. That wasn't...
No.
Oh, my motion was to modify Article 7.
Right. That wasn't your motion.
The warrant was already open.
Personally, I think we should... I think we should do it in another...
Renew?
In another meeting. Because whoever... It's an agenda item. People want to attend and listen, they can.
But there's...
We already had... Right, I know. But they can listen. I'm not saying they get up and have an opportunity to speak, but it's an agenda item. Now, we had it as an agenda item under your motion... Under your town administrator's update, reconsider it. We reconsidered it.
It's done.
And then we're done. I'm not as comfortable bringing up now, under old business. Put it as another agenda item, let people attend who want to attend.
But it would be a substitute motion, agenda item.
I agree.
Because you can't reopen the warrant now.
At this point...
We're too late now. We're too late.
You know, we already discussed it and...
Voted.
And voted, and I didn't have any... And I appreciate where you're coming from, but I didn't have support on the motion. I'm not comfortable now doing it under old business. I'd just as soon have another meeting.
Okay, so now the question is, when the meeting is posted, can it be clearly stated? And I'm not sure if this is accurate or not, but that it is not a public hearing?
Sure.
That it is just the Board to consider a substitute motion? But it's not a public hearing?
No, it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting. Yeah, there is a difference. I know, I know.
Public meeting and a public hearing.
So if it's a one-agenda item, like just one item?
Okay.
No correspondence, no old business, no new business, no citizen form?
Go for it. No, I would have to be...
You'd have to have a citizen's form.
You'd have to go through... No, you don't.
No, you don't. No, that's what I'm saying.
You'd have to...
Request the chair.
Request the chair of a specific...
That's... Yeah, that's what I'm asking. You have to go to the chair first. So, first of all, I can contact Mary, but do you... Do you want that meeting? I mean, that's the next question, or the bigger question. And what works for folks? Because, you know, we don't... It's not our time, but we can certainly put it in if we want to. What are your feelings? Do you even want it? Like, it's going to go there.
Well, I... You know, I've made the move, so that, you know, I would certainly support the meeting.
Okay.
You know? If that's the case, I don't know how the other two feel.
Mike?
As I said, if the... If the Recreation Committee wants to sponsor a substitute article, let them do it at town meeting. I don't know if we really have to have another meeting. You know, that's usually the process, if, you know...
I agree with Mike.
No, I do, too.
They can... If they want to do it, or the CPC wants to sponsor it, let them do it. They can... They have a legal right to do a substitute article. If we have another meeting, it's just going to be more discussion. Selectmen may change their position, they may not. I don't know. I don't... I mean, Selectmen could vote to change their position the night of town meeting.
Exactly. Which we have that right. Yeah, everybody has that right, right. Mary, I know...
I would be in favor of and willing to have... With all due respect, everything Mike said is accurate as well. I would be willing to have another meeting for us to consider a substitute motion.
I have to say that I agree with Mike, that if Recreation wants to bring it up at the town meeting, then let them do that. Or any one of us can bring it up there. But I think my apprehension... I agree on all sides, with all sides. My apprehension is, it's going to become a public hearing again, which is not what it's meant to be. And that's my...
That's a polite word for it.
Yeah. All right. Any other old business?
No. The power poles. Did we get any electricity off those power poles yet? Leon?
Are you talking about the solar panels?
Solar.
You'll be happy to know. Didn't you... Did you see my memo? The one in Shirley?
Yeah.
That one has been...
I saw the Shirley. I'm talking about the Sturbridge one.
Flipped on. Well, we get... You remember, we get credits on both.
Right.
And we are still awaiting for National Dred to do the switch on the Hair Road project.
So that's it?
So it's still... We're still waiting in holding pattern. I'll let you know as soon as we do, but it should be soon. Are you sure we're going to...
Wait, wait, hang on a second. Anything else from you?
No, I'm good.
No, okay. Mike?
Oh, I was just going to ask the town of... Yeah, town administrator, if we were... If he was pretty sure we're going to start getting revenues from Shirley.
Yeah, I think so.
Before the end of this fiscal year.
Before the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah. Or it'll stay... But I think that's what your email...
How about this?
Your email indicated that, and I said, I don't think so.
We're generating energy before the end of the calendar year.
There you go.
Okay.
That's good.
I can commit to that.
I have old business.
Any old business, Mike?
No, not... I just wanted to say that I got the ballot for the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency officials and that annual ballot, and I filled it out, and I'm sending it back in. Didn't have any changes to the proposed officers or anything like that, if that's okay.
That's fine. That's great.
That's your role. You were designated by the Board.
Thank you for that, Mike.
Okay.
All set?
That's it.
Okay. Mary?
I have old business, and would be very brief. I would request that one of you contact our chair. I would like, after town meeting or before, whenever we can fit it on the agenda, to rediscuss some emails that we have had concerning the motocross in Charlton. I know we received an email from our town administrator, who had a discussion with Mr. Barnicle about how that emergency road access is being used.[1571.92]